Board of Directors, Trustees in. Meeting. Let's all stand for pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag. To the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you all.
Roll call, please.
Tony.
Here.
Cronin.
Here.
Hermely. Kern.
Here.
Loz Soreau.
Here.
Jordan.
Here.
Sagami.
Here.
Thank you. Public comments. I've got one here from Jim Tinsel. Jim, if you want to step up.
Sure.
Good evening, Jim Tinsel, five thousand two Arrow Street, Weston. Ladies and gentlemen, the board, thank you for the opportunity to address you today. I'd like to highlight how this body has gone to great lengths to limit public participation in these meetings. We control what is allowed to be said. You have the Zoom meetings so locked down, it takes twenty minutes to enter. All chat features are disabled. You have limited speaking in person to three minutes. And refuse to read emails or letters into the record publicly unless it promotes your hidden agenda. All of this in the interest of protecting your feelings and eliminated. Eliminating the possibility of facts being introduced in this room. Now tonight, once again, you have ignored the fact that our budget is not balanced without using fund balance. We have three hundred to seven hundred thousand of additional increased annual expenses from the fire department to pay for starting next year. But no word on how to solve that, no plan, no discussion. We can see that for a twenty twenty six board problem, right? Why do today we can put off until tomorrow? Instead, let's dedicate our time to rehashing these hypocritical nine tools of civility. Which you insisted on adopting six months ago and haven't bothered to use yourself during a single meeting. Very similar to when you chose to adopt Robert's Rules of Order, you couldn't make it through a whole meeting using that either. To keep with your M O of feelings over facts, let's double down and put on the agenda. A plan to create an additional meeting decorum policy. Something to prohibit any words spoken in this room so greatly that no one can even think to say anything you don't agree with. I think Rip Mountain may have been the wrong venue for the No Kings Rally on Saturday. And perhaps it would have been more appropriate to be held in Weston for the good old boys and King Maloney. I also see a board, see board member cell phones on the agenda. That's an early April Fool's joke, right? It's taken six months since a public records request was made. And you can't provide call logs from the phones you already have. The village is engaged in pending litigation about this, but now we want to add a second phone for everybody to retrieve records from. That's absurdly out of touch with reality. You cannot even lawfully manage records on one phone, but you're going to issue everyone a second. Unbelievable. We are asking as citizens that you start listening, stop censoring and ignoring us. And begin to base your decisions on facts, not feelings. Essentially, excuse me, essentially, just do your jobs, nothing more, nothing less. Thank you. Thank you. Minutes from previous meetings, number four, number five, approval of September fifteenth, two thousand twenty five Board of Trustees meeting. Approval of October sixth, two thousand twenty five Board of Trustees slash Budget Workshop meeting. What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve item four and five.
Motion to approve by Zagami.
Second.
Second by Hermeling.
We have a vote, we have a minor change.
Okay.
There was a minor change in last month's Board of Trustees meeting, I believe it was item fifty-two. Where trustee Zagami was stated as voting no, and he actually voted yes, so I will make that change. And then.
Okay. Any more discussion?
So do we need to make an amendment? To allow for the change?
Yeah. To move this amendment.
Okay.
Great, so, O'Shane, if you.
I moved the amendment, correct, item fifty-two.
Motion to amend by Zagami to correct item number fifty-two from a no vote to a yes vote. Barb. And second by Hermeling. On the amendment, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. So carried, now on the original. Motion by Zagami and Hermeling to approve the September fifteenth and October sixth minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Acknowledged reports, minutes from boards, committees and commissions. What's your pleasure? You want to do those?
I'll make a motion to acknowledge items nine, ten, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen.
So motion to acknowledge nine, ten, twelve, thirteen, fourteen and fifteen B by Cronin. Second by Zagami. Anything on the discussion? Here.
I guess you explained it to me, but I don't know if anybody else had noticed in the safer minutes. That we were no longer going to be charging for.
A higher fee for non.
Higher fee, yeah, for a non-resident for ambulance. And I guess.
Do you want to just dovetail on that?
Yeah, so. That has been a debated topic for years of the. There's some gray areas in the legality of charging a different rate to somebody for a medical procedure just because they don't live in your area. That's always, every fire department has done it for many years up until now. Now most fire departments are going away from the resident versus non-resident and charging straight rate. For same services. Same service.
Even though people pay taxes in that residence.
Yeah, the argument is that it's a medical procedure and just because. You live in a certain area, doesn't mean you get a better price for that medical procedure.
Riverside and Wausau?
Riverside, I know, is changing. When I talked to their chief last, their plan was to change. Wausau, I do not know for sure.
That would irritate me. Honestly, happened to answer the call. And I got charged more from Wausau, but yet their residents were charged.
Well, that could happen anyway because Wausau's rates are higher than ours.
Right.
So, yeah.
Okay. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor with knowledge, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. So carried, acknowledge reports from departments. Number eighteen, administrator, anything you want to add?
Just, there was questions.
Any questions? Okay. You want to do them all at once, or just go to two of them, and then do them all? Nineteen, clerk?
Nothing more than what I had in my report.
Alright.
Unless there's questions.
Any prepareds? Let's see, finance, Jessica?
Just as a reminder, I have the finance. And just if anyone wants early, otherwise I'll be giving them out for that. Meaning the order will be on to the report highlights. On the website.
Yep.
On the website, yes.
Twenty-one, Chief Vicky?
Yeah, I do want to add one thing. And I'm going to talk about this stuff maybe a little bit more on and off here throughout the next year, just because of the discussions we've had around staffing. We had a structured fire on October fifth in the village. It was another one of those incidents where we, we had two ambulances out. And the rescue truck was already, so there was nobody in this building. At that time, a call for a basement fire came in on Michael Drive. The only reason we had anybody to respond is the call came in about twenty after eight in the morning. And the off-going crew, it was shift change, the off-going crew hadn't, two of the members hadn't left yet for the day. So they jumped in an engine and responded. And then we have our auto aid coming from Riverside and Wausau. But. That initial crew got there and without getting into too deep into the weeds, they can't make entry with two people, you need to have at least four unless it's a life safety issue, so. They had to stand there until Riverside showed up to and watch the fire burn because we only had two people. Once Riverside got there, then our crew was able to make entry into the basement. Unfortunately, by that time, there was some other stuff going on, one firefighter was injured, they're going to be off of work for a while. And while we were doing all of this, another EMS call came in in Weston. And because we already had Riverside and Wausau here assisting us, we had to call Mosany. So that individual had to wait for an ambulance to come for Mosany. So. That's nothing new, those things have been going on, but I'm going to. Try to highlight those a little bit more as we go on to just emphasize how much that stuff really does happen.
Any questions for the chief? Alright, down the twenty-two, Park and Rec, Sean?
I do have a report in the packet. As you all know, we have an open position in our department, we did offer the position to an individual and. We're moving soon.
Okay. Any questions? Twenty-three, planning development, Jen?
Do you have anything additional to add if someone has questions?
New person, new person.
Oh, the new person.
New person.
Well, it was in my report, but we did hire a new assistant planner, she started last Thursday, her name is Audrey Webster. She's a recent grad from UWSP and had interned for the city of Wauka for the summer months, so. She's kind of hit, hit the position running already.
Sounds good, thank you. Twenty-four, Chief Hunt?
Yep, our monthly report is in the packet. In addition to that, we had our Monster Bash on the tenth, and that was very successful. We also have a fundraiser on November first, and it's being held at Clux as well. We do have raffle tickets available for that yet in case anybody's interested, so. Trying to get some additional equipment, that's why we're doing fundraisers.
Sounds good. Any questions for Chief? Twenty-five, Public Works, Michael?
I guess. Yeah. Schofield Ave has its first layer of asphalt and. If the weather holds out, hopefully by Friday, we'll be getting the second layer on. On the eastbound lanes and get it all opened up by next week. Weston Avenue, all the underground utilities are in, so. Road building's going on and again, weather allows paving starting the end of this week there, so.
The hospital paving, I can't believe it. It's, it's absolutely beautiful. Yeah, RC pavers. Got the whole outside lane already done. They're already working on the, the other side and. I just, I couldn't believe how far along they are, so.
Yeah, no, we're cruising trying to.
Got a lot of stuff going on. And Fuller two?
Yep.
Is at the first, oh, not the second.
Right, first layer's down up to about, through to the Thomas Ave intersection. And then they'll be pouring the Schofield Ave approach tomorrow morning. And then they need that to cure out, so. Next week or late this week, be looking at asphalt for the first layer the rest of the way.
Schofield Avenue was closed today, yes, will be closed tomorrow.
At Fuller, yeah, it's going to be closed like all week.
All week, yep.
Schofield Avenue or just that?
Just.
Only.
Won't be able to turn onto Fuller from Schofield.
It's been closed for quite a while.
Yep.
Okay. And some planters got put down today? Yep, or put back, I should say.
Yep, good.
Alright, any questions for Michael? And technology, I don't see Nate here, is he online?
He's online.
Any questions for Nate online or anything you want to add, Nate?
Yeah.
You, I saw on your report, you are getting some bids on microphones for the, for everybody, right?
We, we had a discussion of the number that we could possibly add with the existing equipment, so they're going to give me a couple different bids.
Okay, sounds good, thank you. Any questions for Nate? Okay, with that, I need an acknowledgement for eighteen through twenty-six. So moved by Hermeling?
Second.
Second by O'Shane. On the question, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. So carried, work product transmittals, twenty-seven, acknowledge September building permits. Twenty-eight, acknowledge September budget status, and twenty-nine, acknowledge September code enforcement report. What's your pleasure?
I acknowledge items twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
Motion to acknowledge twenty-seven and twenty-eight and twenty-nine by Louis. Is there a second?
No, second.
A second by Joe. Anything on the questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. So carried, consent agenda. Looks like we have one. Thirty-one, approval of vouchers, check number sixty-five, two, six, eight through sixty-five, four, nine, eight. And nine, zero, two, two, zero to nine, zero, two, two, three. Motion to approve by Hermeling. Second. Second by Kern. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried, thirty-three, ordinances. Ordnance number twenty-five dash zero, one, five, an ordinance to approve the rezoning of parcel one, nine, two. Two, eight, zero, eight, two, four, one, zero, nine, nine, three, Wood Violet Trust. From SF dash L, single-family residential to RR five. Rural Residential Zoning District and parcel one, nine, two, two, eight, zero, eight, two, four, one, zero, nine, nine, seven. Scott and Jennifer Summer, one, zero, zero, one, zero, Schofield Avenue wrinkle. From RR five, rural residential, five acre, to SF L, single-family residential, large lot. Village of Weston, Marathon County, Wisconsin. What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Cronin?
No second.
Second by Jordan. Anything on the discussion? Just went through planning, right?
Yes.
Approved?
Yep.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. So carried, resolutions, resolution thirty-four. Resolution number two, zero, two, five, zero, one, six, a resolution to increase dog license fees. What's your pleasure?
What is the name?
I move to approve resolution twenty, twenty-five dash zero, one, six.
Motion by Loz Sorez?
No seconds.
Second by Jordan. Any questions?
Yeah, what is the, is prices, expenses gone up on this or what?
Yeah, the, the dog licensing is a state statute.
Right.
We've been contacted by Marathon County by the clerk's office because. They charge municipalities for dog licensing. And they have to, they were instructed by their county board to increase the dog licensing charge. To the municipal, to increase the amount that they charge the municipalities in Marathon County. Because they had a large gap that. They pay the Humane Society of Marathon County a hundred, about a hundred thousand a year for a contract. And they were only collecting about thirty-five to forty thousand from the municipalities, so they were instructed to increase the amount they collect from municipalities. So therefore, we are increasing our dog licensing to help cover that as well. Because it'll be an additional amount from the village to the county. To close that gap. So they're going from ten dollars for a spayed or neutered male. Spayed or neutered dog from ten dollars to twenty. And for an unaltered dog, it would be from twenty to thirty.
It's a sell left.
Okay.
Do they have, do they have any data on? How many dogs in the western area they're picking up, telling?
Well, no, I don't have any of that.
So it's just a blank fee that they charge every municipality in Marathon County itself?
They charge. Yeah, I don't know how they ever came up with the amount that they charged. They said they haven't made a change for twenty-three years, that I know. They've been charging municipalities the same amount for that law.
Oh, we don't know how much the county, the Humane Society charges the county, that has changed, I'm sure.
Yes. I'm sure that has changed, I don't know what that has been over the years.
Chief, do you know how many dogs come from the?
They're picked up as strays?
Yeah, from Mountain Bay Metro's area.
I don't have the number yet on it, but we haven't exceeded what our agreement was.
Not non-dog stray, stray dogs.
Dogs? I don't know what that is off the top of my head.
We have exceeded or have not?
I'm talking two different things.
Oh, yeah.
On dogs, I, I don't know what the number is.
Okay.
Dogs are covered through license and agreement. Non-dog strays, which would be anything that's not a dog, we cover through a contract with.
We, as the police department, don't pick up a lot of them.
Okay.
So. But the fee is different, though, that's for the actual licensing of the dog for residents that we currently have.
Okay. Any more questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. So carried, thirty-five, resolution number two, zero, two, five, zero, one, seven. A resolution to approve the final plat of Granite Ridge subdivision.
No approve.
Motion approved by Cronin.
Second.
Jordan. Any, anything on the question, this was approved through planning, correct?
Right.
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So carried, thirty-six, resolution number two, zero, two, five, zero, one, eight. A resolution for relocation order and determination of necessity for Ross Avenue Road Project, Metro Drive to Alderson Street. What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Hermeling?
No second.
Second by Jordan. Any questions on the order, on the resolution?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Comments about the, the roundabouts? I haven't heard anybody that's for them, so.
I'm for them. So, we're talking about a, a roundabout at Alderson Street and down the hill, correct?
By Pine Street. That one is the one I, I think is going to be a boggle.
Right. Every, every time we think it's going to be a boggle, they turn out to be great. And it enhances the traffic really well. The accidents are less, less. Less injuries, so. Huge, huge amount of studies on this. And it'll, it'll shore up that area there, it gets pretty wild there when the, the green heck lets out stuff, so. Okay, so any more comments or any more discussion?
This is just a temporary easement?
Some of them are temporary easements, the only, really the fee acquisitions just at the two intersections and the, along the corridor, it's. A temporary easement for grading.
So temporary easement, we return it back to them.
Correct.
At the end of the project.
Yep.
So these, then two separate projects here. One for permanent and the other one for.
Yeah, but you recorded all in the same plat. For the project.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. So without any further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. So carried, unfinished business, discussion and or action on the two thousand twenty-six budget public hearing notice.
Your presentation.
Okay, so in the packet is the public hearing notice, there's just some preliminary numbers in there yet because they didn't have all the final. Sent out the packet, but we're going to run quickly through what we have for the budget right now. The special revenue funds. The first one we're going to look at is the refuse recycling funds, so this fund does represent the two, two hundred and five dollars and fifty cent. Fee that was approved at the last meeting. Again, this is included leaf pickup bulk item drop-off, electronic recycling and refuse recycling from partners. The village administers for the towns, that's where you get the public charges for services and the intergovernmental charges for service. The Weston Aquatics Center, again, we're presenting this budget with forty thousand dollars worth of taxes going to the aquatic center. And another forty thousand dollars being transferred in from the room tax. Next one, TIF one. This one, you can see the. CDA debt going out of one point five million dollars. Where our increment is looking at approximately three point six million dollars, that is undecided yet, it could. Change, I have to get the levies from the other taxing jurisdictions, so. We get closer to the time of publication, I'm hoping to have a, a better number there. I also mentioned that the district is still planning on closing early, we think it will be in twenty twenty-seven after the state reduced the value of our TIF. We will not have enough for debt service to close in twenty twenty-six, so that's the plan right now. Next one for the CDA, this is the TIF CDA revenue debt. As of the end of twenty twenty-five, we're going to have nine point eight to five million dollars. Left it, left to pay off. TIF two, this is the TIF that we will get no increment this year. We will get the intergovernmental revenues, such as the exact computer aid. And we get personal property tax aids, that's roughly a hundred and twenty-four thousand. And then we will be able to use those funds for the economic development and administration being charged to this fund. This, we're anticipating a negative fund balance at the end of the year, how negative is yet to be known. So if, in the future, we're looking at. My guess is about half of the seven fifty-eight, we will be getting as increment in twenty twenty-seven. Looking at that, it would probably take to twenty thirty or twenty thirty-one to actually. Collect enough increment to pay off the negative fund balance of. Don't know, I'm having a hard time forecasting these TIFs because what the state did to us this year was totally surprised. I was anticipating a lower increment, not zero. So we'll have to see what happens in the future, but the board will need to make a decision by March of twenty twenty-six. If we want the TIF district number one to help. Cover this negative balance in TIF two. That is allowable, there's a few steps we have to go through. But if we say we really want TIF two to go away, have TIF one lend some money. This tip can go away and we can close it. Twenty twenty-six, meaning that we will get zero increment in twenty twenty-seven. So, something to look at, we got to get the projects wrapped up to get some final numbers to see where we end up. Something in the back of my mind. Next one. Room tax. We're not really projecting much different here to past years. We did use that fund balance up, so we had thirty-six thousand, seven ninety-seven, we got permission from Tourism Commission to put that towards Kennedy Park. So we got that moved and moving forward, nothing has changed there. Civic social, on the left, that's the farmer's market and our Centennial Scarship Fund. And on the right-hand side, you'll see our Parks Trust, which includes our parkland dedication fees and other revenues that we use for our parks. Debt service fund, this is the fund we use to accumulate monies to pay our debt. The next slide is a listing of our current outstanding debt and the payments that will be required in twenty twenty-six. The TIF district number one is still, you can see that one point five and. One point two in the principal and two hundred and sixty-six thousand in interest, so. It's our TIF that we're continuing to pay off. Next. Capital projects fund, so I didn't show any of the TIF capital projects funds in here. Right now, Weston Avenue is for TIF district number one, Schofield Avenue, TIF district number two. I anticipate maybe having a few costs roll into the new year, but most of those costs should. Will just be minimal. And we'll just fund those with the current TIF monies that we have. What you see there is the facilities and the facilities, we got public safety, we did those extensive renovations for the public safety building a couple of years ago. And we had one planned. That we're going to continue with those reservations when the police department moved out. We still have a few necessary improvements, such as the eight effect system. So that's seventy-five thousand dollars is to cover that improvement. And see what else needs to be done for required maintenance on that building. Parks, we have a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. That might be going towards the pool yet, we got some major maintenance that we're going to continuing to see what the cost for next year. Streets, last time we presented, there was a list of streets that were required. But were planned to be done in twenty twenty-six, you can see the list there. Total of two point one million dollars. Equipment, we have the public safety, Pub Works in some parks. Utility funds, we just got a quick run-through of those, nothing has changed in those funds since we talked about those last, the details we went through.
Nice to part, thank you.
Okay, the last fund that we're so excited to talk about is the general fund. So this is the revenue, as was mentioned before, we do have fifty thousand dollars applied fund balance. We're looking at a property tax increase of a hundred and thirty-one thousand, three ninety-one. That is our max amount that we are able to levy for next year. For our general fund. The big increases you can see are intergovernmental revenues, that includes our shared revenue increase in our general transportation. This way, revenue increase of twenty-three thousand for twenty-six, that's. Mostly our interest income, we're budgeting a little bit low, I know. Interest rates are going to be coming down, but I still feel there was enough room to increase that levy or that budget item a little bit, so it's up to twenty-three thousand. Okay, next one. This is our levy limit worksheet, so goes through and we're walking through, has a big debt service exemption. This is our levy limit worksheet, so goes through and we're walking through, has a big debt service exemption, that matches the amount that we showed above. That we're gonna levy here, split interest for debt service. And down below, you can see where the breakup of the funds is, uh, five point seven plus general fund forty, well, and then that's service and the increment. Next. Expenditures, the big items that we're looking at are for public safety with increases in the police and the fire budget. Um, we have with the health insurance information with that decrease, we are able to decrease. So what you saw before and with this new health insurance information, we are able to lower a lot of our budgets, that's what you're seeing in a lot of this. We also for our public works, we did move some more funds over to fund forty-two to do borrow for more of our major street maintenance again. Next one. This is our expenditure change, this is a greater detail of the change in the budget compared to actual for our major departments. We bypassed the tax one, you can go back up there, yeah, how much will that cost me? So as was mentioned before, we're anticipating a tax decrease, a a mill rate decrease. Um, the reason of that is because of our increment has dropped by over a million dollars. Um, the effect of that is approximately a fifty-five cent decrease on our tax rate.
Just our tax rate.
Just our tax.
Thirty percent, twenty-nine percent.
That leads to more conversations. As I showed, we talked before, we are looking at borrowing next year. Two point one million dollars was it for cap projects fund? Um, one of our options that we should really talk about right here is do we want to levy an additional four hundred thousand dollars and pay off a short term note? So our tax rate decrease isn't fifty-five cents. I don't feel we're gonna be getting any love letters this year because of that, but the hate mail that we'll be getting next year. When our tax rate goes up again, out of no control for ourself, but the TIF will be going up again, this was a one-year significant decrease. Um, it's gonna be a, an increase next year and it's not just gonna be. My guess is half of the fifty-five cents, it could be fifty cent increase, I don't know, trying to foresee the future with that. But it's something to talk about, do we want to save some money in the long run? The interest on four hundred thousand dollars and increase our tax. Tax for debt by four hundred thousand dollars, reducing the fifty-five cent decrease.
Just leveling off the two years.
Yeah.
Right.
There would still be a decrease in the school districts posted their budget, that's also a significant decrease, so. I don't believe we've gotten it from the other taxing entities, but.
We have not, one of the things we're gonna see is that the school district, their equalized tax rate went down again. So if you hear that, oh, the school district taxes are going down, school district. The Village of Weston's proportion of sh- our share of the school district's taxes has gone up. So what we're paying the school district has actually gone up. But we're still like gonna see like a twenty cent decrease, so.
Decrease?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, we're anticipating a total decrease, I'm thinking of closer to a dollar twenty, um, maybe just a dollar. Um, we are looking at.
Their line share of the four, correct? These two versus.
We're the largest share, but yeah, I mean, between the two, it's that would be. Other two are smaller percentage.
Okay. Any questions so far?
Well, when will we make that decision as far as that four hundred dollars? I mean, if we can pay off a debt and get rid of it.
Well, this would, what this would be is levying four hundred thousand, so in January, we get four hundred thousand dollars and pay off it. Debt that we're issuing.
So, I mean, is that something you're gonna put on an agenda to?
It would something, something that we'd have to approve next, I can. So after this meeting, I need to submit our public hearing notice, so.
Yeah, my question was, when will we do that?
At this point, we could talk about that you would like to see the public hearing notice with that presentation and I could put that in there. Um, obviously.
That is tonight is discussion and action, if if we felt like we wanted to keep it the the mill rate more stable, I think that could be part of a motion. This evening that you'd like to see that information back.
So often the yo-yo isn't, it it isn't good and it isn't that we're spent would use it for something frivolous because we would pay down some debt and then we also.
Well, no, what would happen is we wouldn't borrow as much, we can't, we can't pay down debt, um, I don't know if we have anything.
Oh, you misunderstood, I thought you said there was a four hundred thousand dollar.
Short term.
What we would do is we'd go to our local bank and say we'd be below four hundred thousand dollars, we'd be able to levy for that four hundred thousand dollars and then pay it off. Next year.
But then if we borrowed less, it also puts us in a, we're gonna have a conversation later on in the meeting, but if if we had other borrows or significant borrows in the future, it just puts us also in a better position for that.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
So where are we going? There needs to be a comprehensive look at the villages as a whole, so we talked about. I don't know about you, but the whole fire fee discussion was a yo-yo itself, um, we were talking about. Collecting over four hundred thousand dollars in a fire fee and we ended up being to. Hire three, there's some people with um using fund downs for fifty thousand dollars. Uh, I thought that was pretty good, I was pretty excited to see where that ended up and we were able to do that, especially now with the. Um, the lawsuits with the fair fee. But this is something, I don't know about you, I don't, I don't sleep very well at night, it takes about two months. Till we finally have a good plan of where we wanna be. Um, in the future, it'd be nice to have a, a roadmap ahead of time, so next one.
Okay.
Um, we need to create a plan for future that we can afford, that includes service analysis, we need to look at services provided. And what else, maybe a referendum or joint, other joint ventures. And that's it.
Good presentation.
And then we will, let me bring up what we have for the draft.
I would ask my question. Ask my question.
The assessed values came out that that Friday, so I did not go ahead and amend the packet, I could have, I guess, but. So that's why there's a lot of question marks, but if you go back to the PowerPoint presentation, I did have the actual, um. Dollars in there, so our total assessed value is one billion seven hundred eight six thousand four fifty-seven. And then our total requested levy is nine point five million dollars with a tax rate of five dollars and thirty-three cents. Which is a decrease of fifty-five cents.
So from the conversation with the potential of the short-term borrow, would you like to see the public hearing notice include the short-term borrow?
So the tax rate decrease with an additional four hundred thousand dollars is twenty-nine cents. So we will have a twenty-nine cent decrease if we add, if we levy an additional four hundred thousand dollars.
Which would then uh not make such an adjustment in the next year.
Oh, we would just be borrowing less, so yeah, going forward, we'd be like paying less interest in principal.
But we also, the goal would be that we wouldn't go down fifty-five cents and then up a dollar next year, we would just, we'd be more level with the mill rate.
And it's up to you, we could easily just do the fifty-five cent decrease and I think a lot of residents would really appreciate it after last year. When all so many went up because of the reassessment.
Right.
The yin and the yang, right, but then we also have to be prepared if you go up significantly the year after and not level it off, what does that?
But the down the fifty-five and up the positive, seven five to the dollar is the more realistic, factual way, it's it's what it is. Uh, other than altering it to kind of smooth it out for the two years, so. So they wouldn't be, we wouldn't be getting our credit this year, but we would get less of an increase next year, so which which way do you want it, early or later?
Exactly.
For me, I just, I would do the fifty-five, just for me, out of seven, I would do the fifty-five and I'd do the actual next year, that's what I would do. Because, I mean, we're publicly stating that it could go down fifty-five, but we're gonna alter it maybe in half. So that we could take next year's increase a little bit lower. Um, what was it? And so fifty-five was the right number? So I, that's, that's just my opinion, so I don't know, anybody else wanna chime in on that?
Oh, we, I think over the years, we have tried to keep it level.
And I've heard that, and I, and I always thought it's kind of like doctoring the formula, you know, it's, it's. You know, if we're trying to doctor it, we're trying to massage it.
No, but.
Then I didn't get my decrease when I should have, but now I didn't get my increase, so which way is right, I don't know. You know, we paid off the debt, we we lost some interest, we need to save some interest. I I think it's easier to understand what it actually is and it's easier to explain that. Uh, yes, we'll get less attaboys and pats on the back for the decrease and yes, we will get more. Uh, what the hell are you guys doing, you know, going up seventy-five to a dollar, yep, but it is what it is. So I I can explain the fifty-five and the seventy-five to a dollar way easier than we massaged it, well, what else are you massaging? We're we're getting enough of that now, on what are we massaging? So, Steve, you had some.
If we levy the four hundred thousand dollars, do you have a rough idea of what that would save in interest? No?
I haven't looked to see what interest rates are these days, obviously.
I I think it's worth to talk, I I think it's worth the discussion, once you do some more research on it and and to answer that question. What is potential savings, what is the savings on paying it off and not paying the interest, yeah? So.
Well, it sounds like we would have to make that decision tonight, essentially.
Yeah.
So I I would agree that this discussion would have been nice to have earlier on.
Well, this all just came at the end here, a lot of this, so. It, I mean, it, this this whole thing with TIP one and TIP two just came out several months ago, that's it.
And Mark, when you were saying the leveling off, I think there's a a difference in that. What we were doing is scheduling our borrowing so that we were keeping it at a level. You know, that same, if we paid off something, we could borrow. For a street or whatever, but if we still had that debt, we held off until something was paid off that we could.
Well, I.
And that was, that, and that is what we would do.
I I remember five years ago, we were talking exactly about that, we're gonna pay off some debt, so now we can take on more de- uh debt and and loan for this building. And I thought, whoa, so we're not gonna give ourselves a chance to breathe, I voted yes for this building, don't don't get me wrong. Uh, we we took a lot of millions out of it before it got built. But but that's what I heard, we're we're getting some debt down, we're getting, you know, we're, we're gonna have some, we're gonna have a little breathing in this. So let's incur some more debt and loans to build the building. And I heard that, and you know, I don't know if I was on the board yet or not, but but I heard that discussion and and I'm thinking, holy man. You know, so anyway, that that's just my feeling, I'm one of seven, there's six other people up here. Um, if if you wanna level it off a little bit more, let's let's look at that discussion and do it.
I agree with you.
Steve?
I, I guess, when I think about borrowing, it costs money to borrow money.
It does.
So I guess my, I would probably be in favor of levying, levying four hundred thousand dollars and saving money on the back end.
It it sounds like the smarter thing to do, you know, to save on that side too. More, who else?
So do you want a decision that we're going to do that or that we just want a presentation about that with the budget?
So as you remember, the budget's not adopted till you adopt it, so, but you can decide what do you want the public to see in the paper. So that's your, our one shot, what do we want the public to see in the paper, so we just have to decide how we want it to go in the paper. And if you really want another meeting, we can do another meeting, it would have to be between now and next week, right? To get the. We, your notice in.
Yeah, it would have to be fairly short notice, I think if we still did it right, but right after parks, we could meet our requirement. Be a minimum of fifteen, but not more than twenty days before. We would just have to count out that math, but it might even have to.
So the question is, do we wanna entertain, um, you know, the fifty-five, this the, the potential fifty-five decrease? And a possibility of a higher increase for twenty-six or twenty-seven, twenty, which way?
For twenty-six being a twenty-seven.
Seven, yeah, or try to level it off, that's, that's our question in front of us right now. Which way? I'm fine with what the board decides. I've said my piece.
What was the de- was the decrease, did you say that it would decrease to build twenty-seven if we did four hundred dollars? Instead of fifty-five, it would go down to twenty-seven, so it's decrease?
False.
Right, right.
Yeah.
It would still be a decrease to the.
Still a decrease.
The residents?
Yes, it would be a de- de- decrease of twenty-nine cents, this is village only, remember?
Right, right.
And soften the blow for the next year.
Yeah, so, um.
That's what I.
So what I can do is I could prepare it with a higher. With the, you want it with the fifty-five cents, then you can say yes or no, or do you want it to show a twenty-nine cents, then the the board can say. No, we want the fifty-five cents, you just, you don't have to, what you present in the paper doesn't have to match what you would.
Right, I know, but it'd be nice to have what's, what we're gonna approve in the paper. And I'm I'm already hearing uh uh more of the lower decrease and the lower increase out of the three other trustees. So.
We need to make, we need to make a motion on it?
Yeah, make a motion.
So I would make a motion to have this presented with levying the four hundred thousand dollars and lowering the the decrease.
Motion by Cronin to uh, um, having the, in the paper, the four hundred dollar levering, lever, levered. What he said. Second by Kearns, any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Got your marching orders? Thirty-eight, uh, thirty-nine, discussion and or action on nine tools of civilian behavior in consideration of meeting decorum policy.
We still have a, the capital.
Okay. Um, yes, I think thirty-eight. It's in black, not in blue. And you know, it's leading, you know, just leading a horse to water, I guess, okay, so we're gonna now do a black one. Thirty-eight, discussion on twenty, two thousand twenty-six, two thousand twenty-seven capital improvement plan.
Just.
So I, just so I, I I would, I've been playing around with this for lots of months, you know, so what is the rule of thumb? Is blue current, but black is kind of still there, or is everything on here because we're not doing black? On the front, I I just want some clarification.
Blue means there's an attachment in the packet, black means there's not an attachment in the packet.
Learn something every day, that, you know, that makes a lot of sense, that makes a ton of sense, all right. Let's go back to thirty-eight, discussion on twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven capital improvement plan, which has no attachment.
Just did cover, I mean, we've been talking about the capital improvement pieces just covered in the, in the presentation, um, those for public works. But I thought maybe this would be a good opportunity for um those that are on the Mount Bay Oversight Board to share what that discussion was this week. And I did distribute out um a cost estimate that at Mountain Bay Metro received from Volt Construction. So I don't know if you wanna speak to that or if you want Chief to speak to that.
Anyone, I don't care, it's uh, is, as many of you know, with the merging of the Rothschild and Weston into Mount Bay Metro. Um, the initial plan was to probably redo the Rothschild, uh, um. Real estate, uh, Rothschild actually owns ser- almost all the homes around their municipal building. And we were gonna redo that into a different police department to house everybody in there, the forty-some officers. And all the equipment and all the different things, probably to the tune, I think we were initially just ballparking about three to four million dollars. Sixty-five percent being uh Weston Village and thirty-five percent being the Rothschild Village. Um, in the middle of all this, um, it was determined that we should maybe have a different site. Um, in the middle of all this, um, it was determined that we should maybe have a different site. Instead of putting money into that, uh, we bought some property, um, up, um, bought right behind Aspiris. Up on Cam Phillips, uh, we bought, I don't know how large that property is. We bought two lots.
Around seven and a half.
About seven and a half acres for about three hundred thousand dollars. And, uh, and for the last year, last two years, we've been, um, having, uh, some drawings done and some design done. Uh, currently working with about three or four different, five different companies on that to get it to a spec, to take it, uh, to get bids on it. Probably looking into the next one or two years for bids. Uh, currently Bolt and, um, LCM or HCM. I can't, I can't remember all the different.
HTD, HTG, I can't pronounce it here. Did the design on it out of Minneapolis. Excuse me, I'm still getting over a cold.
So we were thinking, you know, in that five million dollar range on the building, and right now it's, it's gone. As it, as even this building did, it's, it's up near the eight and a half to nine million dollar range. And, uh, as a, as an oversight board last week on Thursday, um. And I believe this, uh, one of the five people there, that we can do it cheaper. And, uh, you know, I, I don't know how it got to nine. Um, I, I know that these companies are extremely good at what they do. And, um, you know, the relationship building is monstrous. Um. And, um, I just think we can do a twenty-eight, and, and we did have a nineteen to twenty thousand square foot building, and now it's twenty-eight thousand two hundred. Is where it is now. Um, with an outbuilding that we could have somebody else do. I mean, we could have this whole thing done by Urban or Want or somebody else too. So we're not locked in the bolt, not locked into anything, we're just getting the design things done now. So I'm, I'm kind of just trying to catch up some of the new board members and even some. That didn't know at first what, what was all kind of happening on the Oversight Committee.
I had a couple of points.
Absolutely. I just wanted to rough it.
So, yeah, we currently occupy a portion of the old Everest Metro Police Department that has evidence inside it. We also have storage inside that building. There's two outside buildings that are there. We have evidence in both of those buildings. It doesn't make me happy to say that it's twenty-five years of stuff that we're going through to get rid of. But the problem is, is we're running out of two locations yet. And the feasibility of building onto the Rothschild building, we still would have a space needs problem with that storage of that evidence and stuff. Evidence consists anywhere from vehicles to anything that you would take. Uh, so we have some cars there and got rid of some that were twenty-five years old that we had. Evidence, some of these cases go on for a long period of time. So the goal on the new building was to get everything at one location, so we don't have to keep things. And we're also holding up, as you can see, I saw it on the process here, um, of doing some HVAC stuff and. I'd like to get all that stuff out of that building. And I don't know if I can do it in two thousand twenty-six. So that evidence, we have people going back and forth and. Uh, Chief Finke here is using that building for the fire department and it's. Nice of him to allow us to share a portion of that building yet, and we shouldn't have to do that. We should get it all in one spot, so. I still think we can do it cheaper than what the estimate is, and that's the goal. The goal is not to spend. A pile of money, the goal is to have a nice place to work out of for the next thirty years.
And just a little history on the E M P D building and, um, uh, the fire EMS building too over on Mesker. Is, uh, we were probably as a village boards separately, we were gonna build, spend about a million to two million dollars on the police portion. We had just renovated the fireside and no signage, the whole thing we had. But we still had planned on doing about one to two million dollars. We had a committee set up, do that, several are in the room. And we were gonna actually do that, so that never got done. And so here we are today, so.
Well, it never, it never got done because the merger happened.
Right, well, the merger happened, yep.
We did some of it.
We did some, we did the, we did the exterior, the exterior.
The exterior we did, yep.
Locker rooms.
Yeah.
But.
Locker rooms.
Locker rooms, yep, okay.
But anything that was on the PD side didn't, didn't get done because of the merger.
They never wait a long time, yeah. And the merger's been phenomenal, absolutely phenomenal, so. Everything is fantastic. So anyway, that's where we are. So. The capital improvement plan, right?
Yep.
So.
There's a, a separate agenda item regarding a grant later on, but I just thought this was a good opportunity to.
Just to get it out there and talk about it, yeah. Any questions?
Yeah, what was it, what was the initial estimate of the renovation of the Rothschild?
We, we really didn't have an estimate. We were trying to.
Yeah.
Project something and just so we had a projection to it. But part of the problem with our current location is Business Highway fifty-one and getting in and out of there. And the second part is, we would have to purchase property from the Village of Rothschild because one of them has a house on it. And we'd have to purchase that property to expand, and the other part of that is a little complex is. The building is still tied together with another municipality and having a standalone building. Saves a little bit because let's just say ten years or twenty years down the road. This doesn't work out, or new police departments formed, at least you have a piece of property that you could sell and recoup that cost between the municipalities.
We also, did you have the original architect of the Rothschild Municipal Building? I, we were gonna start working with her, and I thought she came in a little bit to start doing some rough stuff.
I, I did, but we didn't.
Pause.
We never got to a point of a cost estimate on it at all.
Okay.
So.
Okay, this, this would just, this would move the court al- also to the new building.
Correct, and our building currently is designed for about twenty-four people. And we're running thirty-eight individuals out of there, uh, for officers and for more clerical. The men's bathroom, for example, has one toilet stall in it, and sometimes you could have. Twelve people working at any given time, depending on the time of the day. So our space needs is not very good right now, but nobody's complaining because we're trying to focus on the future.
Okay.
So, do you have a copy of the, the C I P with the Senate that we can look at?
There is not a copy of the C I P with the Senate, cause we, we are waiting for a motion from the Mountain Bay Metro Oversight Board on what we would include in that C.
We, we pushed it back to the chief and two members of the Mountain Bay Oversight, Jablonski and Zagami. And a couple others to work with, uh, the design to bring it down. So. Or potentially to go to somebody else. We, we have what we think is what we need, and this also includes, uh, 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 in, a structure for parking too. Which currently you have none, I don't believe, right? You have maybe two stalls.
No, we don't have any room to park anything. I mean, we have stalls to use, but they're occupied as a partial locker room at this point. So.
Okay.
I'm sorry. So. Obviously, uh, as a citizen, I, I corresponded about this. I was concerned about this exact issue when this merger happened. Um, I was very supportive of the merger. I still am supportive of the merger. I think it's smart. I think it's something we need to continue to explore. Um, on multiple. From fire, police, whatever, on ways that we can consolidate to become more efficient and cost, um, friendly. I guess my concern was why we moved, we had a police department, Rothschild PD and Everest Metro PD. We took a department that had a third of the size. We've, I should say, we had a department that had three times the people and moved it into a department with a third of the size. Instead of moving the smaller department into the larger department. Now, I understand in speaking with Jamie recently, that part of that was because the Village of Rothschild did have some of that land near the old, the Rothschild PD. Or the Rothschild Village Hall, and that the, the plan was that there could be some expansion there. And it sounds like that's not a very feasible plan. So I guess my question is, if that's not really a feasible plan, why don't we go back to what we were doing, which is renovate? The Weston Public Safety Building and have that as our police station. We were operating out of there with Everest Metro. The Rothschild portion of our merged department is a smaller chunk and. It would seem that that staff could be accommodated in there. There's room. That if we needed to expand on that building, I, I think there's room that we could expand on that building. There's much more parking availability. Um. That's the biggest question I have is, why not use it? We already own and renovate it. It's gonna, it's certainly still gonna cost millions of dollars, but it's gonna be a lot cheaper than nine million dollars.
Well, nine is not gonna happen. It's not, it's just not gonna happen. I mean, we were talking initially to five million dollar number. And, um, you know, we'd have to run this through Rothschild too. To make this all work and to get, you know, there was a lot of give and take to make this merger work. And, uh. Yeah.
I mean, if I look at the, the response time, not, I mean, in today's day and age of policing, like. The actual location of a police building isn't as super important, but it's an important thing. If you're looking at a response from. To eleven Grand Avenue in Rothschild, up to the far end of the Sandy subdivision, that's a big chunk. It's also a big chunk from our public safety building here in Weston down to the, the power plant in Rothschild. I mean, either way, it's gonna be a stretch.
That's why we saw the highway was sold. Perfect, you know, the highway, um, for accessibility and Cam Phillips has accessibility. You know, we, we had looked around at different properties and we're looking at the property, um, the corner of, uh, Business Fifty-One and Grand Avenue. There's, uh, you know, we're, uh, big, not big lots, but, um, it was a party store.
Oh, yeah, sure, yeah.
It used to be, uh, it used to be a, a, a bar in there too, that had the best hero sandwiches in the whole world. Um, so that, that kind of area right there, we were looking at, but then we thought, okay, we're still inside. You know, the municipality, there's no highway access, we're still flying down. You know, at Rothschild, you have a whole river sitting there, you know. And, um, you know, no matter which way you're responding, it's, it's a bit to get to the highway, it's a bit to go through neighborhoods. Where we thought this highway access was so good and Cam Phillips.
The access though is somewhat more for the public coming to the station and the municipal court. I mean, the officers. Unlike the fire department, they're out, yeah. I mean, they're, they usually are not responding from the station, but from where they are patrolling.
Well, you know, and, and just maybe looking for the future for a possible other merger. If we were ever, ever able to be successful with the fire. You know, and we merged with Riverside, Riverside and us merging, whatever the name is, it doesn't matter. But you know, the Rib Mount facility, the Riverside facility and our facility would be perfect. That'd be perfect, three locations for response for fire. Um, you don't need those different stations for the police. I, I understand the switching it over to Everest Metro, but I don't know if that would fly with Rothschild. Rothschild is the fiduciary for this whole deal and, uh.
You don't know what it's, what would fly with Rothschild?
No, I'm not sure. It could certainly be asked.
No.
Going to the.
Going back to, uh, to Mesker Street.
Okay.
Because I think when the merger, if I recall, was that we agreed that it would go over to Rothschild. And at that time, I asked if it was big enough, and I was told yes, and now it's not.
Well, it's not for the whole time. We, we always knew we were gonna have to do something to the building. So we weren't trying to hide anything, so.
I mean, I'm still as for the merger, don't get me wrong, but it, it. Part of the agreement was that we would move from here to Roths.
Can we make it? Yeah, we can, we can make it. It's tough.
But so I don't know why Rothschild, I guess, I, I won't. Why it would be a problem if it was here.
That's enough of a discussion. Okay, so we got that all. Moving on, so is that, is that gonna come?
What is it? It was listed as twenty-two, thirty, um, capital, I guess, I'm just confused how the way that this was listed on here. All this came up, I mean.
All we're, all we're trying to do is get it into the cycle of the borrowing. That's it. We didn't have a number yet. We, we're not, we're not at that point yet. And so now our next meeting.
So this is not gonna be included for borrowing, twenty-six, right?
No.
Okay. I just wanna make sure.
Mm-hmm.
So let's just clarify, if, if we did borrow in twenty-six, the goal is that we would borrow later in twenty-six. Would there be a payment made on that borrow in twenty-six? Likely not. So could it be borrowed for in twenty-six? Maybe, but a payment wouldn't be due on that loan till twenty-seven, and that would be of your next budget. Season, next budget cycle.
Okay, yeah.
So discussion on twenty-six, twenty-seven capital improvement plan, finished? Thirty-nine, discussion and or action on nine tools of civility reminder and consideration for. On meeting decorum policy.
There's an R F C in the packet, and just a reminder on the nine tools of civility, and we do have the, the posters that are up here on the, on the corner. But then also just the, a discussion if we wanted to do a decorum policy for the elected and appointed village officials handbook. I do have an example there, it's just one example, I'm sure there are many.
What's your thoughts? You wanna go first? Second, third?
Well, I'm just think of, these all sound good, but I'm not sure. Sometimes whether it'll be followed.
So true, it's, you know. And you're not supposed to speed, is it followed? There's all kinds of stuff like that.
Well, right.
You know, to me, all of these seem very much common sense of how we behave in society, especially in a professional environment. Um. I, I guess I have no problem abiding by these or anything like that. I guess. If we're having a policy, is there some kind of enforcement of that policy? How is that handled? Something at the board? That honest is one of the trustees, like, hey, you're not following our, our thing, and I say, I don't, I don't care. I guess what happens with that.
I, I have to say that when I got back on this board in eighteen. And, uh, the past administrator was trying to tell myself and the other person that got on. How we're supposed to handle ourselves. I absolutely told him, take a hike. Uh, they wanted, he wanted me to sit through some meetings, and I am an elected official. And I, everything I, I do is, it's all, it's all there, ready. All the ordinance are there, it's all, it's all done. I didn't need any more, I didn't wanna go through any classes, none of that stuff. If I got in trouble, I got in trouble. That's the way it is. If I said something I was supposed to say, I said it, and I'm whatever. So I actually, I agree with you. I think this is common sense. Um. You know, it's, maybe it's, it's four times a year you bring it up to try to bring some of us back in line. But, um, I don't, I don't, I would have a real problem if this was an ordinance and, or whatever. And, and my position had to scold somebody, cause I, I wouldn't do it. And do it if they, if they were able to say something or. Saying it loud, it's just what it is, so. I, I like it when I say things that are a little out of line, and then you say to me, you know, I, I wish you would kinda. Just keep it a little under wraps, because it means a lot when you do that. And I, I have a few from this side that do the same thing. And, and I'm fine with it. Somebody's gotta, you know, hey, knock it off. And, and some letters to the editor, you know, I, I read those and I take those to heart. I gotta, I gotta behave, so.
Cause the villages in Weston have, um, like, core values.
Mm-hmm.
Part of our strategic plan, yes.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I think. Aside from having something specific for us, you know, the way we should behave or something, it's just that we. As a board adhere to the same core values we ask our employees to adhere to, and. Like, that's kind of what we stick to as people up here. Maybe, you know, as, as a new trustee, I could say, I, I was really glad to have a sit-down meeting with, uh, Jamie. As kind of an onboarding thing, I think we could always do better about kind of, uh, initiating our new trustees and like, making sure we know. You know, the basics of what it takes to be a trustee, but we could also say like, hey, here's. Decor values for our village, and this is what we ask our employees to adhere to and.
Seven years ago, I would have been glad to sit down with Jamie and have her talk to me about becoming, being a trustee again. But seven years ago with the, that, that then administrator, it wasn't a chance in hell that I was gonna sit down with him, so.
Yeah, looking at our values out there, I mean, it seems like that's a lot of what we're talking about here is.
It's right there.
Okay, so I'm, I'm kinda hearing nothing and a little bit of something that this is discussion only and we should move on. Yes? Or do you wanna take action to not do this, or what?
I don't think there's anything for us to move on or adopt.
Okay. So do we need, uh, some action on this? Nope, okay. Um, moving on to forty. Discussion and or action on two thousand twenty-six farmer's market relocation. I, I gotta tell you, in the packet, I thought it was a really good presentation to have the square footage out here and the parking. And, and, uh, then the other one was, um, uh, well, it showed the existing, and then it showed the one at Kennedy. And I think Kennedy has extremely large spot for the farmer's market. And definitely ample parking, a little bit of walking, let me walk in, you know, in, in some grassy areas. I mean, I, I know there's some issues right now at uh, at this location right now with some of the business owners. That they have a real hard time, you know, having enough spaces for customers on a big day. And uh originally, when they started out, they didn't park in the back of the buildings and then they created more parking in the back for a lot of businesses. And they, now they park back there when it gets so busy, but then to show this one here at only what, twenty thousand, no. Whatever it is.
Yeah, but it's less than twenty thousand.
Than twenty and then I think we're currently in twenty-eight.
We're at twenty-five.
Twenty-five and then what is Kennedy Park?
Kennedy is sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine, yeah.
And then we also did Yellow Banks at twenty.
Yellow Banks is the other one, yeah, and how much was that one?
Twenty-five.
I just thought it was good, if, if you read that, I thought it was really good comparisons, corner?
So I asked for this to come back because. I think there's a lot of misinformation out there right now, so first and foremost, this wasn't, this wasn't our choice to move this. We were forced to do this because the property owner decided he wants to develop that, we're leasing it for a dollar, we got a heck of a deal. So, there's, there's, there's a number of folks out there who are saying that Kennedy Park isn't the best spot for that, I would. Would probably tend to agree, I mean, we spent a lot of time going through a, a master plan for the park that did not include. Putting this there, that's not to say that it could amend it to address that, but I also struggle with. With, with putting it there long-term, I, I'm fine if, if we decide that it stays there temporarily. But the other, the other thing that I wanted to bring up, and I don't know if anybody on staff or ha- has thought of this, but. Have we not thought about reaching out to the current property owner at the old site? On Schofield, I have to see if we could use that, it's already, I mean, I don't know if there's power out there or not, but.
But that would be temporary also.
That would be, it would be temporary also, but I, I, I wonder if that would be better than, than putting it at, there's a ton of parking there.
I think the better, I don't think there is, not, not like Kennedy, but I think the temporary one year is Kennedy. And it gives us a whole year to figure out where it's gonna go and be more stable. I, I think right now we're, it's under the gun, they have this ready for next spring already to be where we're gonna go.
And there's not enough room on um. Where the Gulf, uh Disc Golf is there, there's not, where the water. A treatment facility is there at Camp Phillips, there's not enough for.
Oh, no, no.
And I was looking, driving by and not trying to run over anybody, you see what?
Well, and, and you, you just said it right there, so the, just the drive through the thirty-five mile an hour speed limit. There's, there's just the accessibility to that area, the, the coming and going of a farmer's market, all the different people. I think it'd be really hard to be able to do it there. Visually, it'd be nice, but yeah, I mean, we can't beat where it is, and we were technically not forced out. We were, we were very much honored to be able to use that spot for a dollar a year since fourteen, I know. It, it's time, uh, the, the owners are uh able to uh build on there and, and. And do what they do, yeah.
I think the reason we got that spot that he offered it in the first place was the, what is it, Dollar General? When they were building there, they, they built with the stipulation that there would not be another building in front. Of that building, so that lot had to stay open as long as they were in that building when they left. Now he can do something with it.
Is that true? I've never heard that, it is true?
Yeah, I thought it was actually building one that had the stipulation, that's what I was always told originally.
What building?
So the one that has like Jimmy John's, originally that we were told that that was the case, that there was. Regulations, covenants.
But then you got all that went in the front.
Yeah, and then now with this, it was stated later that it was the family dollar.
Family Dollar, whatever it was, that, yes, that he had to keep that open.
Yeah, there had to be visibility on the corner.
They built that for them, but now that they left, there's no longer is that stipulation.
The owner has a lot of history here, he very much enjoys this, you know, community and Weston in particular. And he's doing us a hell of a favor all, over all these, what, eleven years?
And he does have a lot behind that could potentially still work, we just don't have enough time to get it ready.
Right.
Uh, by next spring.
Okay, that's, is that where the building is that?
Um, it would be right behind that building, there was, if there's a long parcel.
A long lot that he tore a house down.
Yeah, there was an old house there, so it'd be just north of the.
That's what I was gonna ask, is there any possibility of moving back there at some, is he got something there?
Yeah, we just don't have time to draft any plans.
That's a huge ask for someone that's in the business of making money.
Well, yeah.
And, and I mean, that's a huge ask, and, and he's done eleven-year service to this community. It's probably the best site we've ever had, well, ever had.
There again, it was, you know, he couldn't.
But, but he didn't still have to do it. You know, I, I, I gotta tell you, if I had all that property and I, and I, I would rather, honestly, I'd rather have a park there sometimes. To have all this disruption for all the business owners, to have all those cars in and out and they're not taking, they're not going to the businesses, maybe they are, but anyway, Steve?
I guess, if this is the location that we, that the board chooses to have this in twenty-six, I, I'm fine with that. I, I wanted to throw that other option out there, I also just wanted to publicly state that. If this is where we put it for twenty-six, I am not in favor of spending a ton of money. On improvements for the site, like if it's a temporary site, we need to do this as inexpensively as possible. And I, I think we also have to be careful about saying that it's gonna be for one year, because. We, we don't know what's gonna happen next summer, could it, is it one, could it be two, I, I don't know, nobody, nobody here knows what's gonna happen.
Alright, so we don't need the gravel, we don't need to put the, the, the stand back, we don't need to put those tarps up that Green heck has those nice ones, we don't need to do any of that, right?
We will move the gazebo and the picnic tables over there, that's. Um, we will do a little bit of temporary electrical, which we've worked into the construction that we're doing out there now. To have it there, we will also put lines in that parking lot, um, so we will make some improvements.
Okay, yeah, otherwise you'd have just nothing but congestion.
But temporary electric and paint is.
So, so I.
Well, the issue I have with Kennedy Park is there is no improvement there. And when I say that, it's a grass field and I've been to countless swap meets with car guys. And you take a field like that and depending upon the weather conditions, it ends up being muddy. I mean, it's gonna be a total disaster. Now, going back to Steve's comment about the original uh, at, at the municipal center. All of that development is still there, is it not, I mean, the, the gravel pads and all those things. I don't know if there's power there anymore because he took the building down. But the reality is, if you wanna go onto a surface, an area that you know that uh you can actually. Do this and not have weather-related issues and, and the other issue I have with Kennedy Park is I think the. The market on the weekday is gonna be fine, but the market on Saturday is gonna be. Really gonna be a challenge. Sorry, where you done? Yeah, so, so like I said, I'm making, I'm, I'm with Steve, is I, I think that we should explore. Um, getting back to the owner of the municipal center about whether or not he has anything going there right now.
So, two questions about that because of questions that I've received from citizens is. And I'm not saying I want it here, but have we talked to the owner of the old municipal center site? Um, about that feasibility and have we looked at Mock Mueller Park as well?
So, yes and yes, we have not talked to the owner of the prior. Yes and yes to the answer to your question, but no, we have not talked to the owner of fifty-five hundred. Because we wanted to have the conversation with the board before we reached out to private landowners about where this would go. We did focus first on properties that we own, the other piece of that is just long-term. So we wouldn't be faced with a similar situation where development happens and we have to relocate. Um, Mock Mueller is considered, but it's, it's far away, it's, it's, it's a. Difficult to navigate people to get there and we've had a lot of. It's easy to find our market now and you can just stumble across it cuz it's on our, a major intersection. Mock Mueller would be a concern because of its location, the more difficult to get to. Um, we have shared the Kennedy Park site with the vendors. They are excited about the Kennedy Park site because it is in a neighborhood too, it has a lot of walkability from a big section of our community.
Yep, um, and we did, uh, we had a meeting this past week with uh. Friends of Kennedy Park and, you know, their representatives of the youth, youth baseball group. One of the concerns that had been brought up is when there's youth baseball, this is gonna create an issue and from their perspective, they said. They don't make it work, they're, they're not overly concerned about it, so.
Thank you, I'm just wait, um, Shane?
Why couldn't we consider this, this area? The way you're showing that you got twenty thousand square foot, if we push it the other side farther north. I think we can have twenty-five thousand square foot and the parking is nice, access is good. Still center of the village, yes.
My, my only concern with that is we have had a lot of conversation about the grass at this location. And the vendors are gonna park on the grass and the people are gonna walk on the grass and we are going to utilize the grass. So I just, like, that's, it is a, it is a smaller site, we would have to facilitate during the workday. We don't necessarily have as large of neighborhood draw as Kennedy does for the walkability piece. And we're gonna rip up our yard.
Well, as I said, you, we can extend that twenty thousand, because if you go farther north, the other side of the driveway. You get another five, six thousand square foot, so you got twenty-five, twenty-six thousand square foot. Now your concern is about seeding, the seeding is easy fix really, we can throw some seed in there.
If it's, if it's that easy here, it's also that easy at Kennedy, right, like.
And you got heavy equipment coming in and out of here all day long, um, Bernie?
You wanna go, Michael?
Well, you, you had your hand up first.
Well, she could, he can go.
Okay.
I was just gonna say, on the north side here, once you get past that driveway, we have um drainage areas, they're retention ponds, so it's not. Flat anymore, it's all depressed and depressed land, not sad land, um, sorry, minor attempt at humor. But uh, so if it is raining or anything else too, I mean, those areas would be, um, I guess, not usable. And then, I guess, when the county uh redoes Highway X in twenty-twenty-eight, our sidewalk is. This far over for a reason, um, cuz the road's gonna move this far over, so. And again, it'd be a temporary thing if we did use this site, cuz. Uh, pretty much anything west of the sidewalk there is gonna be roadway in two years, three years. So, I guess that's another thing to consider it, you know, when we look here.
Okay, um, obviously, I've been doing this for nineteen years, we've had the market for twenty years. We did have it in our old place for nine years and the reason we moved was because of the visibility, like they were not getting enough customers. The vendors are very frustrated, um, because it just, it was way down there and we put signs and it, it didn't matter. So, when we moved over where we are now, um, there was tons and tons of business and. They, they sacrificed not working from their vehicle, um, because there's gonna be more. Um, visibility and more customers, okay? Currently in the old site, there's only twenty-five stalls, okay, we have forty-six vendors right now. Um, so, you know, that would be a concern, but the other thing is, is that, you know, just like if we went behind the building. Where Family Dollar was, if all of a sudden they're like, I'm gonna build apartments or I'm gonna have a business come, you know, that, that's their livelihood. You know, they're not gonna be like, oh, well, we have the farmer's market here, so we're gonna not have somebody come buy it or build it, you know, and. What would we have to pay to rent that if all of a sudden they could have somebody, you know, build there, um, out here, so. I'm at the market a lot at five, six in the morning, it's mass cast, they have big box trucks. You know, we have our midnight people trying to unload three hundred moms, we have pumpkins, we have fifty-pound bags of potatoes and, and. You know, they have enough, they'll drop off, they'll have their vehicle, buy their site, drop off their stuff and then drive out, go around. Out here, it's gonna be really tough, when you have all these big trucks, you know, they're gonna have to jump the curb, there's not like any. Driveway, there's just the sidewalk and, you know, they're gonna have, they're gonna have at least. Forty-five to fifty vendors parking in our parking lot, you know, we have seventy-eight spots, but we're gonna have forty-five to fifty of them be vendors. Um, and so that could be, you know, another issue too, but there's just no way if they're unloading for them to get out. Like, they'd have to either jump the curb to go to Camp Phillips or try to cut through, but there's already people being, you know, putting their, their, you know, tents there. So I'm not sure how, once they unload, where they're gonna go, cuz you either have the, you know, detention ponds or detention areas. Um, to do that, um, we've had some major rainstorms this summer in August, we had back-to-back weekends. Where um, water at the current site, it was over ankle-deep. You know, we had to end up doing the, the market on Sunday because it was, it was just so bad. Um, those same days, I did go to Kennedy Park and there wasn't any puddles or anything, it's so sandy there. So there isn't any more, cuz that was a concern I'd have to, um. And it is, you know, the grass, you know, sometimes the issue, I know corona litter, all there's on grass, there's at their park also.
So, obviously, your opinion is for temporary is.
Well, and it's, it's just very visible, I mean, this is their livelihood, these are these vendors' livelihood. And someone has to try to go find them at our old site or, you know, mock them or something, that it, it's gonna be really frustrating for them, cuz that's their livelihood. You know, being behind, you know, Target, you know, by the high school, you know, being in the neighborhood and stuff like that. And, I mean, I know, like, this, you know, you said, there could be concerns of some baseball tournaments, but there's only gonna be.
Two, three, three or four weekends? What, sixteen plus?
I think there's only two next year because of.
Softball have one and then there's usually another rec day, yeah.
So four.
It's usually four.
Yeah, cuz we have the um horseshoes next year, so there's some cutting.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Barb.
That's right, well, Renee kind of hit on one of it at fifty-five hundred. That was what I recalled, that the farmer's market did not feel that they were visible enough that they were too far out. That people were not coming to it and that's when uh Low Creek offered that corner that we took it. Otherwise, we would have stayed where we were, um, the other question I have is at fifty-five hundred. Um, if that was allowed for us to have it there. Um, when does he have to build something, I thought that was.
Well, I could see a question coming back with, will you allow me then a, another year to, to have some stuff go up to?
So we, we don't have a timeline on construction, we had a timeline on demolition because we had the higher purchase price. So they've, they have met the, the demolition and removal piece, so there's not a timeline on construction.
We had a time, we, we did, we did on the lower number.
On the lower number, that one we.
But he paid the higher number, um, for whatever and, and now that, that is not in there, right?
Okay, okay, but then I had that something in my head was.
Yeah.
That he had to build within a certain period of time.
Yeah, it was there.
But um, but then the fact that the fifty-five hundred, they didn't like it when it was out there.
Where are we?
Well, I'll make a motion if you're ready for one.
For where?
I'll make a motion if you're ready for one. I'll move staff proceed with Kennedy Park as a temporary location for the farmer's market.
Motion, uh, Loth, Thurl, you have a second? We have a second? Said Kennedy, right?
Yep.
You have a second?
I'll do second.
Second uh by Ermeling, I'm now on the discussion, any more? Hearing none, all of us?
I have one question. We have to, do what, why do we have a farmer market? Is it a community service thing that we do? Was it, was there a questionnaire to the community and that, I'm just, I'm ignorant right now.
It's a good question, I, I don't know how we ever developed the one at fifty-five hundred. But it's, it's, you know, why do we have parks, why do we have a pool? I'm sure the parks, you know, it's, it's all, you know.
It's self-funded, farmer's market's self-funded.
Yeah, go ahead.
I think. We also had the farmer market and you were going to Wassa.
Right.
So, from here to Wassa, just to staying in the village and bring more people to the village, I think it's a lot better.
It is self-funded?
Yes, everything gets paid for by.
I love the farmer's market, don't get me wrong, I'm just wondering.
And we do get a lot of positive, positive feedback.
Yeah.
I'll give it a start, yeah.
That's what I was wondering, how did it start, did you ask the community as a whole, would they like to see a farmer's market or was it just, hey, let's start one up?
Certainly heard feedback that they would like to keep it through this conversation too.
Well, and I, and this, maybe I shouldn't say this out loud, but uh twenty years ago, there was a lot of scuttlebutt about Wassas. And it was being handled by a certain someone, a private citizen. And you couldn't get in to the Wassa and, and I don't know if that's true today, but for a long time, you could not get in. And a lot of the vendors voted whether you could get in or not to the Wassa, so I don't, I, I'm sure that changed, cuz I'm pretty sure that individual has passed away. But go ahead.
Yeah, there was a group of farmers that approached the village.
Yeah, there was a group of farmers that approached the village, um, it's prior to Renee running it, I ran it for a year. So I was part of the project to get it going. It was supposed to be run by kind of a group of, of, um. Farmers, and it was just basically because a number of them were never allowed into the Wassa farmer's market. At the time, we were a very fast-growing community when I first started, um, young and looking for things to. Bring community to the, to the village. We couldn't have a downtown area, um, like many communities have. So we looked at having that farmer's market area, it was just a piece of land next to the village hall that. Had been an old baseball field, I think, or something, so, um, the street crew had helped design the current layout. And we just kind of started small, um, and then staff just kind of helped. They just kind of ran it. Um, and after Renee come, came on as the taxpayer relations coordinator, she kind of took it over and it's just kind of stayed there. But it is completely funded by, they pay to, to come to it, um, and it just kind of has ran itself.
So there is a motion and a second on the floor, we're in the discussion phase. Scold me if I did something I shouldn't have done. But while we were all talking, I kind of texted the owner at fifty-five hundred. Cause I, I was actually a little surprised that all this talk and all this stuff about fifty-five hundred even consider it, and nobody has actually talked to him. So I, I sent him a text, shame on me if I wasn't supposed to do this, would you consider farmer's market at your site on fifty-five hundred Schofield Avenue temporarily? And I, then I wrote, I'm currently in a trustee meeting, cause I thought he'd try to call me. He just responded, yes. So it's a wrinkle.
Well, one thing is he's already rezoned the property, so I.
It's a, it's a wrinkle, but I, 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 I don't wanna have that information and not share it. I'm actually gonna vote for Kennedy, so.
We've got to think of the vendors though, too.
Yeah, I know. Steve?
To that, to that point though, if it's gonna be a temporary thing, could be not.
I, I don't know, I can't tell you that without looking at it. You'd still have to follow coordinates to this, so.
Steve, tell your question.
Well, that, that was my question, just a point of order. I keep hearing comments coming from the audience, and right now, this discussion is for the board, and everybody sees that this table won't.
Yeah, well, the comments all night long are for the board, and yes, I've heard them too, and it hasn't, it hasn't gotten too wild, but yeah. If it gets too wild, I'll, I'll do something. Okay, so, um, so my last thought is, why do we have to decide tonight?
I can probably, cause if we, wherever we go, we have to put electric, we have to do stuff before it freezes, before the snow comes. Because we never know in the springtime what it's gonna be like, and we can't start doing stuff in April when we start the first weekend in May.
And also some assurance to the vendors too.
Right, yeah. Visibility, you gotta give it to Kennedy, there's no doubt about it. Now, is it gonna work? Who knows, temporarily, maybe. Joe?
Okay, so, some stuff. What, who's paying for, how are we gonna do that?
Farmer's market. The funds that we receive through the farmer's market.
Okay, so some stuff, please define. I mean, are you gonna, are you gonna, are you gonna add some gravel to that area, or, you know, how are you gonna, I'm really?
A little, we, a little bit of temporary electrical for the food trucks. And we already ran the conduit through the construction that we're doing out there.
And, and the conduit had to be run, cause of how the future phase would be, so it wouldn't be, it's not a wasted conduit that was put in. It was put in underneath the concrete as part of this phase.
You said the gazebo and the, and the, um.
And the equipment that's there will get moved over, which is an, I don't, a couple hours for the public.
A bike rack and tables.
Yeah, we have a bike rack, yeah, all that, yeah.
I know, but you can move it there, yeah.
And then we're gonna line that parking lot, which we will do internally too.
I haven't heard his question on gravel.
At this moment, we weren't planning to put any.
No, if you look at where it says the hundred and thirty-eight spaces, um, where kind of the hockey rink is off of Newport there. That area gets driven on by vehicles all summer long, that's where people primarily do park for, uh, baseball at. The big field there.
Between the field and between the maintenance buildings, right?
Correct, yeah.
That's jammed every weekend.
Yeah, yeah, so, I mean, that made a lot of sense with the hundred and thirty-eight spots right there, and it's a gentle walk across grass. I guess that's what I'm saying, is that, that area has been driven on for, I don't know, twenty-plus years, and it, the grass still grows. It's not a mud hole, it's, you know, I understand the point, um, but I think if cars drive on that other area. I might have to assess it, you know, if you see a big semi come in, you go, hey, you, don't go too far, you get the closest stall, but, uh.
There's really no cost to moving it to Kennedy Park.
I guess, I, on Saturdays, I, I'm not worried about a Tuesday too much.
Yeah.
But Saturday, I mean, if you have, they, they usually start baseball in mornings, right?
Yeah, so again, you know, that's four Saturdays out of the year, and if baseball's happening on the west end and that hundred and thirty-eight spaces is tagged up. Um, one thing Renee mentioned is the vendors would be able to, you, keep their vehicles with them. So that's forty-five, forty-six spots that we don't need for the vendors, so. You know, if people are able to park over by the skate park, they're still able to park on Newport, um, you know. I don't, we might have, uh, no parking allowed on Alderson, we can always change that, uh, along there too, to allow for parking on one side. Closest to the park. Uh, again, it's, we're, we're trying to find that spot for next year, and. I'm not saying this is the permanent solution, but it's a spot that we can make work for pretty much zero cost, or minimal cost. And then find our long-term solution.
Yeah, I, I would never vote for long-term here, never. That, to me, that's a park, it's not a vendor, uh, deal. That, that we have to find a solution to this, and we now gave ourselves a little bit more cushion, but I, I would hope that this is the only year that we do it. Um, any more discussion?
Well, and just one last thought, you know, so I get it, the cars drive on there, but we're talking about vendor trucks now. And where are the vendor trucks gonna park? Yeah, and I get that it's sandy and it's relatively dry. I, I, I recognize all of those things, but there, there's a big difference between driving on there with cars and driving on there with trucks. And it's gonna get tore up.
I, I see the vans staying with their tents, I see the trucks unloading and then going, parking in the parking lot, and they park quite a ways away.
Yeah.
But it's a good point, yeah.
We can monitor if it, if it becomes a concern. I mean, we did, I understand it was one day and not multiple days. We, you know, we did the concert on that, and it, and we had the semis in there for that, and it didn't. We didn't have a concern. We also had a dry week, so I think it's something we just have to monitor.
Okay. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Please, no more discussion. Um, all those in favor, you on a roll call? To make sure? Yeah, let's do a roll call.
Maloney, uh, well, let's.
All those in favor.
Can you restate the motion, please?
Yep, this was a, staff to proceed with Kennedy Park as the temporary location for the farmer's market. So a yes would be.
Twenty-six.
I'm sorry.
Yes to Kennedy. So it's, uh, motion is by Luis, and second is by Barb.
Yes, yes.
Twenty-six, though, Luis is saying twenty-six was part of the motion.
Yes.
Here.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
I wrote, I tried writing as fast as I could.
No, you're fine, so that it's known, like, it's a temporary thing for next year.
Okay. Okay. Maloney?
Yes.
Ronan?
No.
Ermeling?
Yes.
Curran?
Yes.
That was a no you said?
Yes.
Yes, he said. Lobz, Ral?
Yes.
Jordan?
No.
Sagami?
Yes.
Motion, uh, five to two, the ayes have it, Western next year. All right, forty-one, discussion interaction on lease agreement with the town of Weston at fifty-two oh nine Masquer Street. It was in the packet.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Ermeling.
Second.
Second by Cronin, any more on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most, so carried. Forty-two, discussion, uh, yep, forty-two, discussion interaction on writing a letter of support from the village board. On expanding East Nick Avenue. And this letter of support is to, I believe, uh, Senator.
Senator Tomcheck.
Senator Tomcheck, yep. We'll need a motion. It's, it's just a letter of, uh, support.
Motion.
Motion to approve by Ermeling, I'm assuming approved.
Yeah.
Second.
Second by Jordan. Anything on the discussion?
Well, just that Nick Avenue needs to be done something with, and if we can get some help with it, it sure would be nice.
That, and he asked for a very short, to the point, less is more letter, and that's what he's always said at a lot of these meetings.
Do we know if, is it Ringel and Reed?
Ringel and Reed and Cronin Witter, yep.
Do we know, uh, cause I know when you go east there, it's, there's like a creek that crosses through there, and it's pretty wooded. Do we know that Ringel and Reed are also wanting to be a part of this, or?
Probably not.
No.
They're, they're not unsupportive of the road, they do not have funding to support it, its expansion.
Well said. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most, so carried, forty-three, discussion interaction on revise and expanded proposals from T-Mobile for a co, co-location. I actually practiced that, and I still didn't say it right, of cell equipment on a village water tower. What's your pleasure?
I have a quick question before I make a motion.
Can we get a motion on the floor?
I, I'm not gonna make a motion.
Okay, do we, somebody else will make a motion on this?
I'll make a motion, get him on the floor.
Um, motion by.
Try the staff to continue to pursue lease agreement with the T-Mobile from installation of the set equipment. At the East Everest Avenue Water Tower with the following condition. I don't have any condition.
Okay, motion by Zagami, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Kern, question by Cronin.
Does the potential outcome of the closed session tonight have any bearing on this?
No.
Is that a separate?
That's, that's a different one.
It said, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Good question, good question.
I just wanna make sure that we got all the eyes dotted, teeth crossed, that we aren't in a situation like we have. With some of the other ones.
No, no.
I would, I, the reason why, main reason why this is coming back is that it's a much bigger footprint, that's why we include the, included the plans. I'm not sure, I mean, this is, this is a large pad underneath the water tower, a seven-foot fence. They're going to take up the majority of the structure on top, and I, I just wanna make sure that we are comfortable with that. And we feel comfortable that thirty-five hundred dollars monthly is a dollar a month that suffices for taking up that space on the water tower. I'm not saying it's not, I wanna make sure that we're comfortable as a village with them.
Just thirty-five hundred a month basically takes care of our fees. It's for the board.
It, it will go to the water utility, cause it's water utility.
Of course it will.
You're welcome, Michael, I knew you were thinking it.
Michael, what's the condition of that tower?
Like, as far as its life?
How old is it?
Old.
No.
Off the top of my head, I don't know, but, uh, it was the, like, a second tower in the system, so I'm guessing it was probably built in the, uh, late seventies.
Well, those are forever.
I mean, so it's probably about fifty years old.
So what's the condition?
It's in good condition, um.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna lead it.
Saying you're done? Are you done?
Uh, yes, but still, it's important to know how often you're painting it, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, a, and those are all things I, you know, I guess my concern was, even with some of their initial plans, they showed having to. Relocate other people's infrastructure up there, and I was like, okay, so, you're paying for that, they're like, well, why would I pay for that? I'm like, you're, you're moving somebody else's stuff, like, you know, so, you know, we're making sure that. The rest of our, you know, our telemetry up there isn't negatively impacted either by it, cause, um, you know.
So, you know, because I've made a motion to just bring it for discussion.
Yep, Steve?
So my question would be, did, don't we have a water master plan that included moving this water tower out towards the hospital?
Not this water tower out, it's the Summit Ave Water Tower.
I saw that in the, it's the same one, this is items for the Summit Ave, East Everest Avenue Water Tower.
That it will, it was when we first discussed it, and they, the cell company determined that East Everest was the best location. And so the plans are presented as East Everest.
So if we ever decide to replace that water tower, who's responsible for?
I guess that's what we need to make sure we.
Or?
Yeah, we need to put that in, in the lease agreement, you know, probably pick a sunset clause, you know, that, it's not a. Into perpetuity agreement, it would have to be, uh, you know, after fifteen years, or, you know. We'd have to pick a timeline, so, cause then, yeah, the, the tower doesn't have an infinite life, so, yeah, at some point we would.
And if you put a sunset date on it, though, if, I mean, if something catastrophic were to happen with that water tower, and we were, we were to have to make a decision.
Yeah.
Much quicker than that to do something about it. I don't want us to be in a situation where we're stuck, because we agreed to a lease.
No, I.
Thirty-five hundred dollars a month, so I think we need to make sure that we cover our bases there.
I'd agree there, yes, uh, you know, it's always my biggest worry when we give up, we say you can use village property for something else. But make sure that it can still be used for what we need it to be used for.
That's good.
Did you have some?
Um, from nineteen eighty-one.
Nineteen eighty-one, okay.
That's close, you were close. Barb?
Well, I just wanna make sure, and I kind of alluded to it, but that, um, they aren't going to be allowed to. Contract or put other people's stuff up on top of there without getting a increase in fees, or. I mean, this is, you know, we kind of left an open book before, and, and I like the idea that there is a sunset clause on there. Because.
I would agree with the statement about the additional contractors as well.
Okay.
Is it period, no additional contractors, or no additional contractors without a opening up the lease for an additional?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Because they have presented a lease to us, um, which would need Attorney Edie's review, and I said, I had asked them if they would cover that expense. And they have said up to twenty-five hundred dollars. So if it, if it's more than twenty-five hundred dollars to review or to rewrite portions of that lease. That's our expense before we would collect revenue for the monthly rent.
Yeah.
Well, we don't have to accept twenty-five hundred dollars, we can talk to Mr. Edie, see what's the cost is, and tell him, this is the cost you gotta pay it or not. He's not, they're not gonna dictate to us what to do. That's our property.
At the end of the day, we can say no.
Right.
Okay.
Don't have something.
Don't.
So how did we, they offered thirty-five hundred dollars, or we asked?
We asked. We asked for the thirty-five hundred dollars and the ten percent escalation.
And I thought they went lower to them, or, or we were getting lower from a, a different one.
We were, we are getting lower from others. We, we had gave them these terms, and they said, okay, we, then, we. Semi-agree to those, we need to explore whether or not the engineering of it works, and they have said yes, and now they'd like to take it the next step.
So, I can only assume the reason that they want to put their equipment on the tower is because it's significantly cheaper for them to do that. As opposed to building their own towers, or, or going through the permit process, how we determine that thirty-five hundred dollars is a fair price?
Well, how, what is that, what's it assessed at? The tower that they put, that somebody privately put next to Aerobar. I honestly thought that that was being put there privately to get out of our issue behind the fifty-five hundred. But that's, it's two different pieces. But that's, you're right, to put that tower up and maintain that tower, and all the guide wires, and the fencing and security. It'd be incredibly more than thirty-five hundred dollars a month, yeah.
So when this request came, we also had another request for the tower in the Technology Park, um, and I. At that time, we had done some exploring with other municipalities, and thirty-five hundred was a, was a decent monthly cost, based on what other municipalities were getting. We had made a similar proposal to the individual that wanted to be in the Technology Park, and he said that, he, he said no, that they, they could not cost. Flow it up with that monthly rent. So, and then, o- obviously, it was quite some time before, we told them this. And then it was quite some time before they got back and said, yes, we'd like to take it the next step. Now, it's just that the plan has grown, and I wasn't comfortable continuing. To allocate funds from the village if we weren't comfortable with continuing a lease.
I just think these are gold. These are gold, and they create gold everywhere at thirty-five hundred dollars. This is nothing. It's a snivel to be on top of that building. It is.
What, and I, I've heard residents.
Yeah, so I.
In your backyard.
Yeah, I'm not, I, I certainly am in favor of doing this, I just wanna, uh, determine. Make sure that we've determined that they're paying a fair price and that.
Five thousand, I don't.
Yeah, we're not leaving money on the table, so to speak, and, um. Is that escalator annual?
Um, yes. Yeah, it was a five-year term with a ten percent escalation per term, so it would be ten. Percent escalation over five years, which is, would be the term of the lease.
Ten percent over five.
Over five, not, not each year. Over five, not, not each year, over the term of the lease.
Or the terminal lease is what? How long?
Five years.
Well, then automatic renewal.
It had, I believe it has a potential for.
We gotta look closely at that, cause there is no way they're gonna put, do this for five years. This is forever. They're, they're looking at this forever.
They're giving two percent increase and.
So, um, Rothschild did approve a uh, agreement with T-Mobile in, at their August eleventh meeting. And looking at their minutes, um, they're getting four thousand six sixty-eight a month and it has a four percent escalator in it. Um, there they have two hundred and forty, looks like square feet of uh, area on the ground.
And what's our square foot?
Ours is looking at, it's closer to four hundred if I, so I mean, I, I think the thirty-five hundred probably is on the low end.
What if you have a higher escalator? So when you math that out over five years, which.
It is four over five.
It was four, four percent.
Over five years. So point seven five or point eight?
No, I think it was annually.
I would be surprised if it's not four percent annually.
Again, we also, this was in, this was in April of twenty-four, right, and then by the time they circle back to us and then did the engineering plans, it's, it's been a minute, so I, it's another reason to bring it back up.
Well, it's also a red flag that we offered a price or we sent a suggestion of price and it took it. You know, that tells us that we went too low.
And their, their floor area or ground area wasn't.
Well, it's half the.
It, it wasn't what I was expecting when they sent the plans over, right? The uh, initial conversations were we need some room on the tower, not, we need room on the tower and all this uh, space on the ground, so I, I think from there.
So then fenced off and security and all that kind of stuff. I mean, they, they put an extensive amount of stuff over here behind fifty-five hundred over the last six, eight months. Un, unbelievable amount of stuff in there, which we checked with Yidi and he knew about it, so.
So maybe we should ask a higher price and put some contingencies.
Well, so who'd offered a thirty-five? The staff?
No, we talked about that at board, that was a.
I thought, I, I thought we did, so, yeah. We, we thought we were kinda high. We changed our mind, we had a rogue trustee that just got on the board. One of, one of you two, that said baloney.
Yeah, the thirty-five hundred.
Two years of footprint, I see we uh, I see we go to five grand and leave the rest alone.
So what would Rothschild be getting for a per square foot? Michael, you know, can you figure it out?
Trying to quickly math, yeah.
So they have a two hundred square foot footprint versus our four hundred. And they're getting forty-six, six-six, you said? Four percent escalator?
Correct, yeah.
They're getting thirty-five for, for double the floor space. And ten, two and a half, two percent a year. And if they're getting four a year, that's considerably more than this.
The two hundred on the ground would include the antenna on the.
I guess I'd have to maybe look, it says the proposed additions to the cell tower to be two forty, so I don't know if that's a two hundred and forty additional square feet that they added or if that means with the additions, everything's two forty.
So they're, they're already there.
They were already there, they were already there and they're adding on, so it was a renegotiation.
I got you.
So they're pre, it was a eleven fifty addition per month. Chief, what were you at that meeting?
I'm trying to think, is that the one on Tower Park?
So they were getting about thirty-five hundred with the same escalator and then they're adding the two hundred floor print, right, the two hundred square foot.
Yeah, that's a it might be in the Cedar Creek area, doesn't say which tower.
Well, I mean, just against their, I mean, we're easily, we gotta go to forty-five hundred, forty-six hundred. And who's at T-Mobile?
That was T-Mobile, yeah.
Who are we? For heaven's sakes, my god, they're our neighbors. They're our neighbors and, and we can see their minutes, my heavens, it's all open record.
The request to have all that space down on the ground, I think is, is needs to be looked at, figure out what.
I, I say um, with possible more negotiations, I say we move it to five grand. And that's, that'd be my opinion. I don't know, or don't do it at all.
I would base it on a hard number that the square footage, but the square footage price, I mean, fair is fair, I would go to T-Mobile and say, hey, you give, you're giving Rothschild this much for a square, per square footage, we need to say.
Then we're probably talking about six grand. You know.
Yeah, and I don't think it's, it's, it's not about the square footage in the ground, it's the value of the, the height and the.
They need the square footage because they're going.
How tight are we to an agreement to, to let this go for one month?
No, 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 they, they're talking about putting this equipment on the water tower, not building a tower next to the water.
Right, right, but they're using the ground for some. Yeah, are they using the ground for the wires?
I could ask them, I, I mean, I think they wanna start, but I could, I could say to them, we need to delay a month. I mean, we've, it, we've been working back and forth for over a year now, so.
Do we have a number? Would, would we agree on a number, an increased number or not?
Oh, that's what I was gonna say.
But Mark wanted to be fair is fair and, and get the square footage right, so, I mean, do we wanna do five or fifty-five hundred? I think fifty-five hundred, six grand is very fair to what Rothschild signed.
Yeah, I mean, if I just do, this is very simplistic math, but it's like twenty-three dollars a square foot and if we have four hundred square foot and that's just the ground, that's nine thousand.
What's our number?
Yeah, but Michael was saying that that was.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that's the.
So what did they get it on the additional, the additional?
Their additional increase was eleven hundred.
So they were getting about thirty-five hundred.
Yeah.
For whatever the addition is, it doesn't matter. The end product is still up on top and two hundred uh, floor space. And our end product right now, as the agreement is, is the stuff on top of the water tower and four hundred, so double the space down.
Yeah, I just don't know if that was two forty in addition to what was there already, or if it was zero and now it's two forty, or if they already had two hundred and now they're at four forty.
I know, but the end result is still two hundred. Or, or you're thinking it might be four hundred?
Like, I don't know, I, I don't know what they started at, yeah. So, we can do some, we can do some asking and figure that out.
But the additional was two hundred and forty.
Correct, yeah.
And we know that they, they increased their contract to eleven hundred bucks.
So you can do that.
Divided by two forty, what does that equal per square foot? Five.
Four or five dollars, right?
Four fifty-eight.
Four fifty-eight, yeah. Yeah, so I mean, that only gives us eighteen hundred, so I don't think that's a.
We started this conversation two years ago. I mean.
I don't think a month is gonna.
We can get some more information.
Let's, let's, let's do that, let's table it for a month.
There is a motion on the table.
Okay, with uh, that current motion holders table. So Husheng will rescind. Kern, will you rescind?
Yeah, I'll rescind.
Rescind, okay.
Then we, we should have a motion to.
Motion to rescind, all in favor, say aye. Ouls, so carried, my god, thank you.
Need a motion to table it though.
Uh, motion to table.
I'll move to table this to.
By Luis?
Second.
Uh, second by Joe.
How long you table it?
Next meeting. To a future meeting.
To it, future or next meeting, whichever. Which one?
Either one we are comfortable with, we'll get.
I'll just say future meeting.
Whichever one you can bring it back. With, with some more uh, statistics. All those in favor, say aye. So carried forty-four, discussion and or action on potential implementation of a fire fee in the future.
It was just a brief memo in the packet. Not sure if we need to recap, been having a conversation at, at prior meetings. But it was asked that both this and the referendum discussion come back for this month. So they might crisscross and dovetail a little between this item and the next item.
We're asking, we're discussion or possible action on a potential implementation of a fire fee in the future. Right?
Yes.
So, w- we would not say no to that. I mean, we, we would leave our options open, correct? What are you saying? Yeah, I mean, what, I, I guess I misunderstand what this is.
I think it was open discussion. After knowing about the lawsuit in the southern part of the state. If we wanted to continue the conversation about fire fee, if we wanted to continue a conversation about referendum, if we wanted to not continue either conversation.
That's a good thought.
I would wanna continue. Conversation about a referendum and the fire fee would be something we'd have to.
So they're, they're both coming up, so yes, okay.
That's why I say they might crisscross, the conversations.
To um, uh, action to uh, just for potential mediation for in the future? Or not? We do a referendum and the residents say yes. We're certainly not gonna impose a fee. Now, in my self, my one vote, if we do a referendum and they say no, I will not be going yes to a fee. I mean, they spoke. So.
This is, where, this might be part of the next conversation, but if you.
It may be.
We would have to have the conversation when you wanted to have the referendum. You would have four opportunity, well, three opportunities next year for sure, maybe four, if, if you wanted to do early in the spring. But, you know, if it failed, do you wanna do it again? Would you wanna do it a year later? Would you wanna do two in one year? You know, the, those would all be potential conversations.
So back on forty-four, discussion and our action on a potential implementation, implementation of a fire fee in the future.
I, I think that's open-ended, I mean, I think attorney Edie was still looking at what was gonna happen with that case.
Right.
So.
And the referendum. There's two, two different things that could happen or that we could still watch to see that, so I don't know if we actually need action on this, do it?
The, the only potential, maybe if you wanted to say that you want to table this indefinitely until new information would arise that would help to aid in whatever your decision would be, which would likely be how the lawsuit comes out, or if the item would be appealed afterwards, if other communities would implement the fee.
From my perspective, I'd like to move on from the fire fee discussion, move forward with the referendum discussion. And fire fee thing will always be out there as a mutual, it's a statutory thing that's allowed. Um, it's something that we can always look at, but till we know if we decide to go to referendum um, and how things proceed in the future. For now, I just don't think that we need to continue conversation about fire fee.
Okay, so what, do you wanna state that or just drop this?
So I, I'll make a motion to table the fire fee discussion indefinitely.
Does indefinitely mean indefinitely or until further needed?
Until, until we would need to.
Okay, alright.
You looked it up last time.
If you table indefinitely, it's, you can, it, there isn't any timeframe, it would just naturally come back if it, you determined it would come back.
So motion by Lobz Serral, second by Kern, any more on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. So carried, number forty-five, discussion and or action on a spring referendum for exceeding the state of Wisconsin levy limits for public safety. And specifically for public safety. For both sides.
I think that would be a conversation if we want to, public safety and police and fire, would it be only fire? Would it? Would it include a building, would it not include a building? I, we're open conversation.
But that's all afterwards, we're not deciding any of that today, we're just saying yes to a referendum.
You cannot say yes to a referendum tonight because referendums go unbalanced with resolutions. You would have to adopt the resolution with the impact to the levy.
Right, okay.
Now, you, you can't change anything for the tax bill in twenty twenty-five that's paid in twenty twenty-six. Would be for the tax bill of twenty twenty-six paid in twenty twenty.
In a April election.
That's, would be determination of the board. I do have um, the.
There's two different dates, one for a primary and one for a spring, correct?
Correct.
Okay. What's?
Spring would be better.
I think the spring is.
In the fall, you, you do have to wait for next year's information to come out, so it does really condense that timeline in a a short period of time if you go fall. Again, with having a at least a spring in general next year, um, if you wouldn't succeed in the spring, could have the conversation if you wanted to do it again in the fall.
Alright.
But I think then the other piece is, is this fire, is this police and fire?
I know years ago, we had talked about doing a referendum before all of this, because of the cost was rising to the point and we were looking at doing a referendum and at that time it was public safety. It was not fire or police, it was public safety.
I think so too, I agree, Steve.
What were your thoughts on funding that building?
Well, technically, we have our first year that's being completed right now, so we don't know what our fund balance is gonna be. There was some money that was uh, earmarked in that budget to make the payment on the building depending on what the amount to the building was. So the goal on the building was not to impact the taxpayers.
So the building could be built without an increase?
I, I can't.
That, well, I know you can't say that definitively, but that is the goal, correct?
That was, that was the goal, but I think part of that has changed a little bit with the cost and if we get the cost back down, that probably is still strong possibility. And that was the goal, does not to impact the taxpayers at all. It was to be paid for, borrowed by the communities and paid for through the budget of the police department. One of the goals was to wait till December thirty-first to see what our fund balance and carryover was, to see how we sustained our first year working together. And that's why it wasn't a pressing issue. Till CIP plans came out, then that became a little bit more pressing to make sure that we had that money available to build a new building.
I guess at that point, I don't know if I would feel, I mean, if we're gonna go to, if, if that's the direction the board wants to go, I think it should be fire only. We don't have numbers on the police, I think the plan right now would be to build that into the budget. I don't see a reason to add police to that. That would be my two cents.
I agree, I, I think it's important that we don't overly complicate the referendum. I think we have a tangible need in the fire department. We've already um, made a step in improving that with the three people, we know that we wanna add more people over the next few years. I think by having a, a referendum specific to the fire department allows us to say like, hey, we know there's this need. We can show the current deficit um, with our fire department and and isolate that specifically, if we, if we overcomplicate it, then it's it could split people's decisions, they may say like, hey, I'm, I'm fine with this, but I'm not okay with this, and it'd be better to just keep it singular.
Yeah, I guess, in a way, the building in itself, um, our portion of it, we would have to borrow for, which does not affect what do I wanna say, our levy limits. Um, as long as we can keep up with the expense of the police officer, you know, in the department and it's running of the department.
I, I don't, I think Luis has got a good point there, uh, the, the building is gonna really confuse everything. I mean, if we wanna do public safety with running the department, having the personnel, that's one thing. We throw a building in, that's a whole other animal. And uh, the conversation over the last four or five, six months has been fired. And, and nine firefighters that we need. And that's, that's the current conversation, so. If, if it stays there, then fine, if it does go to public safety, I don't think we need to put the building in. Just go both either way, so.
Then forty-five should actually say
Fire, sure. That's fine. That's not, that's our choice. No, the conversation is very healthy, no, I, I think this was the right way to put it on here. And we've come to an agreement and I, I think we have.
Yep.
See what somebody makes for a motion. Right now, we're, all we're doing is talking about, I, I would think that we're talking about saying yes to a spring election in April. Whether it's the primary date or the, uh, the. Whether it's the primary date or the, the, the regular date without a primary. And then all the rest to follow. Right? We, we gotta design all the rest, we gotta design the wording, design the resolution, everything. Okay. That's what we're voting on.
I don't believe that we have a spring primary at this moment.
We don't at this moment, yeah. We won't know until January.
But we could, it could be just a spring primary triggered by seven uh, trustees. That would be a primary.
We wouldn't know that until January.
I know, but we won't know that till January, that's what I mean.
I'm sorry, but we would have to have the, the paperwork filed prior to that.
Your, yeah, your deadline would be December tenth to get it to the pony.
The referendum would, I mean, I'm sorry, the resolution.
Right, okay. That's not much time.
I make a motion to bring back a resolution just for consideration of a spring referendum. For exceeding the state of Wisconsin levy limits to be for fire.
Motion by Ermeling.
Oh, sorry.
Second by. Lobz Serrano. I can get it.
Yeah.
Feeling pretty confident. A motion and a second, any more discussion?
All I'll say is, I'm really glad we're back at this point. Um, this is exactly. I'm, I'm glad we worked through this, it took a lot of work, it took a lot of discussion, it took a lot of public feedback. Um, and this is how it should work, we got feedback, we knew. The, the staff worked hard to make things work for this year, but we know that there's a need and. We can continue to look forward here, so I'm, I'm glad we're taking these steps and now we know to stick with it and.
Why, why are you only looking at me?
I'm not saying you.
You, he wasn't. But I, in the middle of that, I just had to throw that in here, a small attempt at humor, Mike. So anyway, so we have a motion and a second on the floor, uh, any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. So carried. New business forty-six, discussion and our action on president's appointments to committees and or commissions. Uh, let's see, I don't have that open here. So we've got, um, let's see, on parks. Um, I, Barb has uh, had a discussion with Barb and. She's not gonna be on parks for a bit, and Luis Lobz Serrano is gonna be the chair. Mark Kern, our new trustee, is gonna be the vice chair. That's a change there. Uh, tourism, I thought, tourism. Uh, Fred Schuster, I had a conversation with Fred and he's still on Public Works. And um, Jackson Yallowitz. Uh, more commonly known as Jackson Taylor, is gonna, a Weston resident, uh, who did a lot of the concerts in the park this uh. Summer for us is very interested in, in on our tourism commission. And then I have one more that's not in here, I would like to appoint. Uh, Joe Jordan to the Everest Metro Joint Finance, which is hopefully gonna be finished shortly. Uh, and on that, Everest Metro Joint Finance would be myself, Steve Cronin and Joe Jordan. Um, those are the recommendations I have, we still have an opening for clips that we're gonna advertise for. And, and joint review board, I do have a call into someone that we talked about. Um, should I state the name or not yet?
That, that person is actually selected by the joint.
Yes, yes, so, uh, if I'm, if uh, if she says yes, um. Will, would be that person that will put up towards that, for that vote. Um, let's see, that's all I've got, I think, right? I believe so. That's our openings. So, I need a. Trustee approval of that, looking for a motion to approve or to deny.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by. Ermeling, thank you, Barb. Second by Zagami, any more on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, so carried, thank you all. Uh, there's no attachment on this next one, but forty-seven, discussion and or action on cell phones for board members, I'm a quick learner. So I, I asked for this to come on here, I know there's been some comments here prior to this. But all I was asking for is a conversation between the trustees, cause obviously our, our conversations have to be here. Is um, with the cellphone and uh, open records requests and some of the issues we're having with our own personal or, or business phones. Um, is it something that we wanna think about or talk about? About having uh, issued cell phones for the board members and of course not theirs. And then turned in as they are not appointed or not elected, I should say, or resign or whatever. Uh, it was just a discussion, I'm not trying to get uh, people's hair in the back of their next hall rows. Um, I'm fine with the way it is, but I, I just thought a simpler way must be. Uh, out there, but maybe not at, at our expense, uh. Administrator Jane, uh, Hey Bart had said, geez, with all the conversation we're having with staff. I, I don't know if we should, but I thought I'm just gonna bring it up to the board members and, and let it go from there, Barb?
Well, I'm not sure it would solve the problem because, um. I still could see someone requesting your private phone for getting information off of it. See if, you know, with, with open records, I don't, I don't know if you've got a, a village phone. Could they still go after your private phone?
Absolutely, any village business that's conducted on any phone is village business.
Just have to be careful not to use your personal phone. But it still could happen.
Yes, yes, but I mean, that was, that's the question.
Then, uh, I, I, maybe I should never put this on here. So with that, I would say no to this, and I don't know what the rest of you all think.
Well, I know that was the reasoning behind it, was if we used our village phone.
Well, if you're gonna.
And if there's an open records request, that would be the only one that would be able to be, you know, questioned. But I was questioning and. And answered it was, could they still go after your private phone, just in case you had a private conversation?
A deal, that's new. Okay, do we need to? Table it, do nothing, let it go, okay. Um, right, am I okay with this, if I move on? Forty-eight, discussion and or action on recommendation from the Finance and Human Resources Committee regarding amending the cellular phone stipend. Stipend for two thousand and twenty-six. Looking for a motion?
I motion to accept the Finance and Human Resources Committee recommendation regarding amendments to the cellular, cellular phone stipend. And return at a future meeting with, do, do you need the rest of that? And return at a future meeting amendments to cellular phone policy of the employee personnel policies and procedures handbook.
Okay, so we have a motion by Lobz Serrano.
Second.
You have to repeat that. Second by Ermeling, uh, all those, uh, any more discussion? And this is approved at Finance and uh, HR, um, with uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So carried. Discussion interaction on this vote elect slash election services memorandum of understanding Marathon County.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Cronin. Second by Zagami. Any more on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. So carried fifty, discussion and or action on the creation and sale of the Village Own Proposed Certified Survey Map. For three thousand and six and three thousand and eight Foxtail Court. And now, so who's gonna, oh, let's get it on the floor first.
Only the motion to put it on.
Uh, motion by Ermeling.
What's a motion?
Uh, to uh. To sell a Villa Joan Proposed Certified Survey Map of three thousand and six, three thousand and eight Foxtail Court.
I think we would like a dollar about.
That's what, that's gonna be my discussion. Yeah, then, oh, I see this, cause right now it's a range, it's arranged from forty-five thousand to sixty thousand. My heavens, let's say sixty thousand, and we can always go down, you start at forty-five, you can't go up. If the appraisal, if the appraise says what, forty-five to fifty-eight or sixty? Then for heaven's sakes, let's take the nine, high number. And, and let's say we want fifty, my god, they're gonna think they won like crazy if we go down to fifty or fifty-two.
I think our conver, our internal conversation, our staff conversation was, we could always come down, we can't go up, but I think the conversation that. At um, Public Works was, we still wanna seem comparable within the market, so that's why we said. This is kind of the range of what we're looking at.
And the range again was?
Between the forty-five to sixty.
Okay.
It's only one parcel.
It's only one parcel, yeah.
Was six and eight.
It's the, oh, with the drainage.
So, I'll, you wanna try it or you want me to?
Go ahead.
I recommend approval of the certified survey map and the sale of the lot for future residential development with a sale price of fifty-five thousand dollars.
Second that. Motion by Cronin, second by Jordan. On the discussion? I would have paid sixty, so you know. All of fifty-five is the most I wanna pay. I'll go by a, a used uh, four wheeler.
Go ahead.
I guess my question is, is we still would have the, what I wanna say, drainage?
Yeah, so the.
And everything, I mean, why, that's what we bought it for, correct?
So the outlot will still exist in the back and there'll still be an access easement to get back there. So if you look up there. Outlot one will still be available to access the pond and maintain it. But lot one would be sold and somebody can. Develop that lot.
So we had no other need other than for the drainage.
Any more discussion?
So, so, yeah, so in Public Works, the, the reason that I wanted the board to consider this is. The whole idea is to get this into the hands of some private individual that's actually going to build something on it. So the only, the only caveat that I would have is that if we're gonna sell it. I'd like to make sure that somebody's gonna build something on it, as opposed to keeping it as a butterfly.
Sure, good idea, that's a good point.
Okay, so, so I would be willing to entertain an offer from somebody. For even less than fifty-five thousand, as long as there was a stipulation. That there's gonna be something built on it by a certain time, depending upon maybe what time of year it is or something, something similar to that. Is that, cause like I say, the whole idea of bringing this forward was to get, get this back into, onto the tax roll. So to speak, and I'd rather do that sooner than later. If the price is too high in the market, so to speak, that somebody wouldn't buy it and build on it right away. Then dividing it and sitting on it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me.
Good point.
So, so I, so I would like to say that, that let's start at fifty-five thousand dollars. With the stipulation that an offer to purchase has to include a timeframe to build.
Yep, yeah. So we can leave it, can we leave the motion where it is, but staff work on it with that direction?
Well, I would have to, I think I would have to amend the motion.
Would you, would we need it changed?
No, I think if you amended your motion that said that we could ask that when we were.
Looking for an amendment.
So I will amend my motion to include a timeline for, for development to occur on the site.
Okay, so, motion to amend by Cronin.
Second.
Second by Zagami, um, see, any more discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, all those in favor of the amendment? Um, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. So carried, now on the original, back on the fifty-five motion to sell, um, any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried, thank you all. Uh, number fifty-one, discussion and or action on tourism entity agreement with the Wausau Convention and Visitors Bureau. From January first, two thousand twenty-six to December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-seven.
I move. Approve all of the tourism entity agreement with the Wausau Convention and Visitor Bureau from January first. Twenty twenty-six to December thirty-first. Twenty twenty-seven.
Motion by Zagami.
Second.
Second by Ermeling, any more on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, so carried, fifty-two, discussion and or action on the village administrator accepting a three-year term. On the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Board of Directors. Moved to approve by Zagami.
Second.
Second by Luis, um, Lobz Serrano. Um, anything on the discussion, on the discussion, I think it's outstanding that you're gonna represent this community on there, I think it's a excellent deal. I was extremely happy and proud of you when uh, when that, uh, when they reached out to you for that, so that's, that's outstanding, fantastic. Any more discussion? Uh, hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, so carried, fifty-three, discussion and or action on a three-year service agreement between Prime Adada and the Village of Weston. These are the check writers.
No, this would be for our utility billing.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay, yep.
I move to approve three-year service agreement.
Premium data by Ermeling.
Second motion.
Second by Kern. Any more on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried, I can see the light at the end of the rainbow. Fifty-four, discussion or tunnel, discussion and or action on the claim of CSM Companies Incorporated. This is moved to deny by Zagami.
Bergen.
Second by Jordan. Uh, this is actually quite a funny read, I mean, I, I shouldn't say that, I, I'm gonna quick take my comments back. So we have a, uh, any more discussion?
Just to clarify, you're disallowing the claim.
Yes, correct, so by saying yes, you're disallowing the claim. Which is recommended by insurance company. Um, although, um, so a motion and a second, uh, discussion is over, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried, fifty-five, discussion and or action on well, number three, iron, magnesium and PFOS. Treatment project bid results. Well, three, iron, okay, so there should have been a comma there, okay, I didn't, I didn't hesitate.
Think this project can be awarded. I can find that, see that.
Um, it was. Page three thirty-six.
You guys go ahead, make a motion.
Well, uh, you're just trying to get the name of the bid?
Yep.
Okay, so that is, I'm right there.
I move to award the well three PFOS pre-treatment project to Eight Pine Incorporated for a total project cost of. Three million, seven hundred and forty-eight thousand, six hundred and three hours and forty cents, which includes, includes the base bid and to all chance.
Motion by Cronin, second by Zagami. Any more on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried, discussion and or action on hospital area repaving project change order number two. What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Cronin, second by Jordan.
Oh, excuse me, Michael, won't you explain this?
Yeah, so this is a time extension, when we uh, added the streets around the hospital in the summer. We didn't change the deadline or the due date of the project.
Yep.
So, um, it's really just extending the project due to the increased uh.
Are they falling behind?
It's not a money issue, it's a time issue.
It's time, yeah.
Is he falling behind?
They're moving pretty quick right now, so.
This is around the hospital?
This is around the hospital, yeah.
My, my, they're on the second phase already.
Yeah.
They're flying, they're straight, I, I just can't believe it, and I'm telling you, their seams. Are almost, you can't seamless, there you go. They're almost seamless, where you go on Schofield Avenue, you can see the seams, is, is that? That's American asphalt on.
On Schofield Avenue.
And.
Our season by the hospital.
Oh. That would be a skateboard dream. It's soul smooth, it's baby smooth.
Well, I know that, I, I think they were working on Shory also.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Shory was American asphalt.
Yeah, that's American asphalt.
Well, uh, the residents were very pleased that they came and fixed the, the driveway approaches. On a Saturday, they could not, somebody asked me when that was gonna be done and I read your letter and I said, they're gonna do it. Weather permitting on Saturday and they said, ah.
Okay, so, yep, we have a motion and a second on fifty-six on the repaving project, change order number two on time only, any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried, discussion and or action on assessor contract approval for two thousand twenty-six through two thousand twenty-eight. What's your pleasure?
So at our meeting tonight, the Finance HR meeting, we decided to call back. Two of these companies for interviews at our next meeting, so we did not approve a, a bid.
Okay, really? Yeah, I'm shocked.
Well, we had a, we have. We have, we currently use, and then we had a lower bidder, um, who currently works, works with some of our neighboring municipalities. Um, so the committee decided to call back those two for a meeting to discuss. You know, what their availability will be here. You know, what their availability will be here, we, we obviously know a lot about the one, but the other one we don't. They're the cheaper bidder, so that was the discussion that.
The cheaper was ninety thousand and the other one was one twenty six.
But three hundred, I don't think is worth it, but. But you probably, if you already made a motion on that, but.
You don't have to take.
I think he paid more than that back to us. He deserved his village over the years, I'll say that way.
And that was the conversation at, at Finance and HR. We wanna ensure that we would, we can provide the same level of service.
Yeah, and I, I would tend to agree with that, there's a lot of intrinsic knowledge that Greg has that you're gonna lose when you bring another. Contractor in a situation like this, so.
Does the board have to go by what finance?
No, it doesn't, no, and I'm, I'm su- I'm sure there's gonna be some no's. I'm not trying to lead this, I I I I absolutely not, so.
All I would say is that there was an ask for bids to go out on this, and there is a lower bidder. The contact person for the village, according to the proposal, lives ten minutes outside of the village. There is stuff in the proposal about the person holding office hours here, and they do work with neighboring municipalities. So, eh eh eh, I think it warrants a discussion to, to see what they are willing to do. I certainly understand the experience and the history with the other vendor, but if we ask for bids, I think it's important that we honor that. Not to ignore it, so that's.
Well, one thing I wanna say about the bid, the lowest bidder means really nothing. Is the lowest responsible bidder. That lowest responsible, that's what we consider.
How do we know that the other one isn't responsible, because we've never.
Well, that's what we do our homework.
Yep.
That's what you make sure you know what these people offering to you, then you can pick up the most. Lowest responsible bidder, and that's what written in the statute.
And that's, and that's why we're gonna do these interviews to.
Sure.
Make sure that that low bidder is, I mean, we obviously know a lot about the one and we, we wanna honor that for sure. So, I, I'm not torn one way or another, I just.
No, I just explained what's the, because I think we get misled with the lowest bidder. Whoever give us the lowest number is the lowest bidder, but the key to it is who's the most. Lowest responsible bidder, that's what we gotta consider that, and as I said, it is a statue.
Um, the finance, they wanted to have local them here for interviews. Um, and I guess I would kinda like to be able to have the board at those interviews also.
When is that gonna be?
Next one.
Hopefully next month, I mean, we'll reach out to them if there would be any sort of, we have some time before the first of the year, but.
You prefer, do I need to have them come in person, or are we gonna be able to do soon? One is not from the area.
Well, if they can't come and.
It should make a difference.
And then that'll be my answer to their response.
So we have a motion on the floor, right?
I didn't make a motion, I was just sharing what we did at many level.
Okay, so where are we doing?
You could, your motion could be to accept the actions of the Finance and HR Committee.
Something else.
Or something else, yep.
What's your pleasure?
I'll move to accept the actions of the Finance and HR Committee.
Motion by Lopez Serrano, is there a second? Second by Ermeling, any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. No, no. So we need a real call.
Maloney?
No.
Cronin?
No.
Ermeling? Kern? Lopez Serrano? Jordan? Zagami?
So that's a, a fail, so now do we move to the interviews, correct?
No, no, that's what, that's what that motion was.
We can move to.
Okay. Okay, now do I have a motion to approve?
I'll motion that the village sign the twenty twenty six, twenty twenty eight assessment contract with Greg Schmidt.
So motion by Cronin.
All second.
Second by Jordan, on the discussion?
My discussion would be then why do we even have the committee to begin with, they put in the work, they put in the discussion.
It's very rare, but it does happen. It happens on public works, it happens on planning, it's very rare, but it does happen, yep.
And there's, there's been out, there's been times in the past where this board has voted against what the committee decided and then changed it again. So I, I think the, the committee, and I'm, I'm just speaking as a member of that committee, but I think it's important that. They felt it was important to do our due diligence that we asked for a bit. And that we, we honor that process that we asked for. I understand there's history and experience.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of accepting Greg, uh, Schmidt's assessor services for the two, uh, twenty six, twenty seven and twenty eight? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No, no.
So, is that a two, five, or is that a three, four?
I heard two, five, if I'm correct.
You were a?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so we have to switch, so a two, five in favor of, uh, accepting, uh, Schmidt's, uh, assessment. All right, thank you, very rare. Um, let's see, fifty eight, discussion and or action on a council suitable write-offs, what's your pleasure? Motion to approve by Ermeling.
I'll second.
Second by Kern, anything on the discussion? All, all are gonna be on, uh, on assessment except one, correct? One went out of business or writing off the Condor Coffee. Thanks, okay. All right, uh, hearing no more discussion, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, so carried. Uh, fifty nine, discussion and or action on providing a letter of support from the village board for the Mountain Bay Metro Police Department. Application to the non-state grant program. This is, uh, just a support letter, uh, that Rothschild's gonna do also, that also the Mountain Bay Metro is gonna do. Uh, for a grant that they're writing to, uh, possibly, uh, get two million dollars.
And it's short notice and it's due on Friday.
Yeah, it's due on Friday, so it's, um. Next week, Friday first, yep, Friday first, yep.
Don't make the month go faster.
What's your pleasure?
I motion to approve the letter of support as presented and, uh, forward to the, uh, Metro Police Department.
Opened by Jordan, second by Cronin.
So this is that we have to be in agreement that we're going to, that we've secured funding for fifty percent of the project, but we don't know.
If we ascend this letter, that doesn't mean, say if somewhere down the road, the board decides, we're not gonna build it. We, we can, we still can do that.
Yeah, I think you can choose not to, but if we don't apply, we'll never get it.
I, I respect that, I just, we have a need, we don't know the number that we're agreeing to fifty percent of.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, it has to be over two million or four million.
It has to be a total of four million dollars.
It has to be over four. So that's, that is the stipulation, so sorry about that, I shouldn't have said that, it has to be over four, yes, to be able to get the, the two. Okay, and there's a lot of stipulations, it's gotta be like a merge or two municipalities, different things like that too, I think. So, okay, any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? So carried, uh, you wanna just, the outside stuff before motion? Uh, any return, any attorney referrals? Any administrator referrals? Uh, any remarks from trustees? Luis?
No.
Joe?
No.
Mark?
No.
Steve?
No. No. Barb? No.
No, I thank you all, everybody for all, everybody's hard work. Um, let's see, you mentioned trustees present, future items, next meeting date, Monday, November seventeenth, two thousand twenty five at six P M. And now we'll move into more, more, uh, closed session, move into closed session pursuant to Johnson stat. Nineteen point eight five, parent one, parent G, and finally, legal counsel for governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy. Be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is, or likely to become involved to wit. Marathon County Case Number two zero one eight, dash C V dash one one nine. Um, motion, no, we'll call vote.
Do the motion first.
Uh, motion, you're right, motion, uh, to go into closed session, please. So move by Cronin. Second by Kern, um, now we'll call.
Maloney?
Yes.
Cronin?
Yes.
Ermeling? Kern?
Yes.
Lopez Serrano?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Zagami?
Yes.
We are now in closed session.
One moment.
Now we're looking for a motion to approve, uh. The deal.
I'll make a motion to approve the settlement agreement between the Village of Weston and S P A Towers.
Motion by Cronin, second by Ermeling, uh, any more in discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, so carried, and now looking for a motion to adjourn? By Zagami, second by Lopez Serrero, uh, all those in favor say aye. So carried, we are adjourned at nine eleven, nine eleven.